Okay, may I have everybody's attention? Welcome to the City of Dania Beach. This is our regular city commission meeting Tuesday, April 25th, 2023. The meeting's now open. Can we please have a roll call by our city clerk?
Yes. Mayor Ryan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lawellin?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Salvino?
Here.
City Attorney Bootses?
Here.
City Manager Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Yavacorn?
Okay, thank you very much, clerk. Everybody, please bow their head for a moment of silence. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna jump right into our presentations and special events. And for our first presentation, we have beach art, which is sponsored by Commissioner James.
Thank you, mayor. This is just the beach project that I'm bringing back that we brought forth, I think, last year sometime. There are three options I wanted us to discuss and have considerations for from the artists, working with Kelly from Art in Public Places. So this is option one. And then Ralph, could you go to the next option? While he's getting it set up, one has hearts on it, one has palm trees on it, and one doesn't have either. It's just different styles of art. He's right there, he's working on it. Technology is like a bad car, right? Your car's fine, and you take it home, you take it to dealership, and something's wrong, and you take it home, and everything's wrong. You wanna exit out and try to? I'm sure you tried that. But do we have any discussion about this one first? I guess while he's, or this type of concept, all the concepts are very similar to that one.
It's the same artist, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And they just give us three concepts?
Correct. Well, took into consideration some of the things that we said last time and went with Kelly and the artist. He brought back this design, no writing, no publicity to the quarter deck or their models or anything like that. It just kept it simple.
It more focuses on the pier itself, right? Yeah, it's not?
Or just the art alone and not necessarily the business.
Perfect. Commissioner Davis?
Is this the same artist as it was prior to? The one you presented, is it the same artist?
Kelly, is this the same artist? Yes, I thought it was, but I wanted to be sure.
Okay. I did have some concerns because since-
Oh, there's the other one.
Got it?
Yep, that's the other one. And then Ralph, can you go to the last one? And that's the last one. So you have waves, hearts, and palm trees. Continue, Commissioner Davis, I'm sorry.
Well, I really don't have per se anything wrong with the art. I think, you know, any one of them probably could work. But my concern is that we started this process, I think it was in September of '22, and there's been seven months, there's been a lot of changes with the board. The Public Art Advisory Board has been operating for about a year now, and we have the public art ordinance, and in addition, we have now added the mural ordinance that has a new code, and it has a new directives for all of the art. I don't know if you're aware of Cluckin' Hot Chicks, the new restaurant that we have. That mural had to come back to the art board because it wasn't in compliance with the public art mural ordinance. So I just have some concerns, and hold on. That the new mural ordinance says that the city commission may desire to install art or other pieces of art, not utilizing public art funds. Any such project shall also be required to go to the Public Art Advisory Board for review and recommendation consistent with the city's public art plan. So I know this was approved with the previous art board and with the previous commission, but I do have an issue with usurping the authority or not recognizing the Public Art Advisory Board as a whole to be able to vote on this and bring it back to the commission for a vote. Because every other art piece, whether it's a $1.2 million piece, whether it's a $45,000 piece, whether it's the piece that's on tonight, has all gone through the public art board for commission, I mean, for a vote to recommend to the commission. And I just have a problem that this isn't consistent with the process. So that's my only concern, not with the art itself.
Okay, I think, good to see the attorney, wouldn't we be grandfathered in? Because we discussed this prior to all those changes happening.
So you brought this forward at the September meeting, and there was a lengthy discussion at that time. A majority of the commission, which at that time was Commissioner Oddman, yourself, and Vice Mayor Salvino at the time, authorized this to go forward with you talking to at least the one board member and bringing back the pictures to you all. I believe the commissioner is asking for you to take into consideration the changes in the code, but that was the direction and the vote of the commission.
Okay, so would it be grandfathered in?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that it's not, you know, we would be grandfathered in. Otherwise, it would be going back to the board. But we do have the chair here, of the Public Arts, Arts in Public Places Advisory Board, if you all have any questions for her, as well as I've worked directly with her and the artist to ensure that it is consistent with things that go on at the public advisory arts boards.
Commissioner Salvino?
I think that we should vote on one of the three. And then if we decide that we like what we like, then we could send it back to the advisory board. If they don't like it, then they can bring it back. In the meantime, we might skip a step instead of putting something off again.
Anybody else? Vice Mayor?
I think as long as we don't have an issue, if nobody has an issue with the art that's been selected here, we can go ahead and vote on it tonight.
Yeah, I agree with Vice Mayor, I'd like to move forward and vote on our selections now. I had a chance to look at them earlier, and, you know, all three of them, I think, are gonna be a great addition to our peer. So if it goes back to the art board, there's some issue, that's okay, but at least we can pass it now and approve it now. Vice Mayor Salvino?
No, I just wanna be sure, that was what I was gonna say, I'd like to at least have it go back, like Commissioner Davis had mentioned, but I think right now we can make that decision, I think it'll work. I don't think that they'll go against us on something like this, I think they all look good, so that'd be my opinion.
The only thing I wanna say is they're advisory, so even if they had a recommendation contrary to yours, you are the ultimate decision maker.
Right, and if there was too much conflict, then we could also resend our vote and we can start over again. Correct?
If you're on the prevailing side, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so let's- Go ahead, Commissioner James.
Yes, thank you. So since we're not required, because I already asked for the authorization and received the authorization, and I've gone and worked with the chair of the advisory board, I'm asking that we move forward with it now, seeing as the chair of the entire advisory board has no issues with it and has worked intimately with me on this. So I'm asking that I've already received the authorization that we just move forward with it. Do I have consensus to do so? Say yes, Commissioner Salvino says yes. And Vice Mayor says yes. So which ones do we like? One, two, or three?
Here, I'll call a vote.
No, wait, I gotta see which ones we like. One- Hearts is one, palm trees is two, and the waves are three. So that's one. Go ahead, Ralph. Oh, well, that could be two.
That's three.
And then three.
Okay. So there's, one is the hearts, two is the waves, three is the palm trees. Okay, so by show of hands, it's the best way to do this when it's three. Who votes for the hearts? Please raise their hand. Which is number one? Who votes for the waves, number two? Please raise your hand. All right, and who votes for the palm trees? All right, palm trees have it. Thank you, everybody, and the public also. All right. Thank you, thank you, it's gonna be a great addition, I'm happy we can move forward on it. All right, that's that, Commissioner James. And now on to item 3.2, we'll move to the Clear Channel presentation, sponsored by Commissioner Joyce Davis. One moment, Commissioner, all right.
Thank you, mayor. If I could have Matt and Stephanie come forward, I believe their presentation is ready. We have had several workshops regarding our advertising budget. We did set aside $100,000 for this year, and the commission at the time voted to have $50,000 go to the airport. We have since had other presentations, but we are here to listen to Clear Channel themselves instead of me trying to do the presentation, they are here in person to do that. So please welcome Matt and Stephanie from Clear Channel.
Hi, so my name's Stephanie DePaul, I'm the sales manager at Clear Channel Airports, and as well, we have here Matt Munius, as Commissioner Joyce mentioned, account executive.
All right, so we'll continue, because I know we have a limited time. Happy to meet everyone, I've actually been following your journey with marketing and rebranding, and Commissioner Joyce Davis and myself have been working on this for some time, so happy to be here, thanks for having us. So for Clear Channel Airports, what we're doing is presenting to you tonight, based off of the feedback from the last workshop, something within the budget, within Terminal 1 and 3, targeting JetBlue and Spirit Airlines, and also, perfect, kinda jumped ahead here. Also, we were tasked with coming up with thought starters for the creatives, because I know you guys went through rebranding, and we're just looking for like taglines and so forth. So behind me, I have marketing teams, campaign coordinators, and so forth. If we can go back- Oh, I didn't know you had that. Yeah, so to continue a little bit, we have two different bundles that we'll present, but we also have marketing materials that highlight how we can siphon some of the attractions and tourism that you guys have, considering Dania Point, the pier, and also the casino, and just, you know, just being tapped in with the market and what you have to offer in that perspective. So a lot of what we have is data and analytics to direct target market. Something like this slide here pretty much highlights how people passing through the airport, travelers, locals, frequent flyers, and even tourists, once they see the advertisement, like the one that's presented up there stating, "You're already here." I know some of the focus was, "You're landing in Dania City, why not stay? Get the hotel, tax dollars, all that fun stuff." So what we came up with is, "You're already here." And then what the slide shows is basically, when someone sees an advertisement for restaurants, it states that 90% will go to that type of attraction, or that type of amenity, in a sense. The tourist attraction is 84%, so that's number two, that's the main focus, that's exactly what we're looking to do. And then just going down the line for any other events that you can still siphon, you know, that foot travel, and then have that traveler's journey coming through. I know I'm from Pennsylvania, I never heard of Dania Beach or City of Dania until last year. And beautiful place, by the way. But yes, so, I mean, just highlighting where you guys are, what you have to offer, we have that through our medium over at the airport. And just real quick, 68% if they see resorts and hotels, they will have that recall and look for a place to stay. Bar, 68% nightlife casino, then we have 64% with the winery and the brewery, 53% for sporting events, and 51% for spa. And then moving along, we have, this is one of the thought starters that our team put together, great team. We actually managed the outdoor billboard, so they do very intricate creatives, even anamorphic in Times Square. So that last slide highlighted, I'm sorry, can you go back one? I like that one, that's the one in Terminal 4. All right, so that one, from day to night, endless possibilities. If you can see Dania Point, there's an image in there from that, and the beach, so we kinda did that together there for that creative. And that's by the Starbucks there. I know some of that was presented in the last workshop. So this right here is what I was speaking to as far as getting the direct target market to get to the attractions for what you offer within your city. So 56% are more likely to visit the casino at Dania Beach, and that's what we want. One in three plan to take a beach or lake vacation trip in the next 12 months. Over half have used internet apps to research and plan personal vacations, traveling in the past 30 days. That I like to highlight, because I know, again, you know, you guys have like an app that you were trying to use, spend some money on it. That right there, we can siphon some of the QR codes, get some more app downloads, and just let people know where things are within the city to go to the attraction. Sorry, did you wanna speak to-
Yep, so in here, we're just showcasing the capabilities that we have when it comes to our design team and as well as the display in the actual airport setting. So in here, you guys are gonna be able to see how the video actually showcased the different motions and just be able to like really portray the different, just like entities that you guys have and what you guys have to offer with the casinos, with your beach, with all your attraction and being at top destinations within the area. So right here, you're just gonna be able to see that, like I said, this is a thought starter. We're definitely going to work with you on creating what is the essence that you guys wanted to really showcase within your branding. And I just move forward into the bundles.
So the first bundle was presented in the last workshop. We did a good job, in my opinion, grabbing this one. It targets Terminal 1, 2, 3, and 4, and it captures most of the monthly travelers at 1.6 million a month, high impressions, which can, you know, potentially get good return on investment. So this one right here, we did add back in there. Also, it was budget friendly too, which we'll show towards the end to capture 2023's 50K that was voted on. We could go to the next one.
Before we move forward, is there any questions so far on what we have presented?
Any questions? Commissioner James?
Yes, I just, for me, it's just gonna come down to what we can afford. So a lot of that was kinda confusing of what we can afford and what it comes with, and how often it has to be switched out, and the total cost for all of the services. So for me, when we're looking at this on top of like the campaigns, I love the moving graphics in the campaign, you're already here, that's genius. But, you know, looking at the PIR and the rate card and all those things, how does that factor in to someone that doesn't do this for a living, and we're know our budget is $50,000? So if it's one page that we can kind of, you know, compare all of the information and make that decision, that would be easiest for me.
For sure.
Yeah, and we do have that on the next slide. We just wanted to present what is the bundle one that hits both. So what we try to do is, within your budget, try to reach the majority of the traffic in the impression. So both bundles are gonna hit the O4 terminal, Terminal 1, 2, 3, and 4. So we can go and go straight into the bundle pricing, right? The bundle pricing number two is you're gonna see two static options and as well as the digital. The digital really gives you the baggage claim, high dwell time, really capturing that moment with the video of the different things, right? You can also add stack different type of video within your test seconds loop. So you can have a casino showing on video number one, then the loop goes again, and then you can have the beach in number two. So it's very budget friendly when it comes to the capabilities that you can do, and that's why we wanted to present it in the second bundle and doing the revision for that. So I'm just gonna go over the pricing, right? Sorry, just really- There we go. So package number one and two, we hit it right at the budget pricing. That is inclusive of PIR, which is the production, install, and removal, and as well as the media costs that you have for that. So this would include flight from June, starting June 1st, all the way to September 30th, to be right aligned to your fiscal year now, in there. So that will hit, like I said, your Terminal 1, 2, 3, and 4, on both of them.
Commissioner James?
Is it June 1 through September 30?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I mean, for me, I like package two, just because it has that screen in the baggage claim. That's the only one that has the video, correct?
Correct.
So that would be my vote. I think it's very creative, and, you know, can we, could we change things out, depending on if we, well, it's only for four months, so if we had something coming up, would we be able to change that out?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the thing. It's flexible messaging. We have clients who change it once a month. It's, you send us a profile, or sorry, image in the right specification, and we upload it within our network after approving it through the airport same day. So it's.
Is there a cost associated with that?
No.
Not at all. I love digital, actually. I push that more than print, but a lot of people do like print, just because it's not a shared voice with having other advertisers rotating.
Okay.
Yeah, and since we most likely be doing ACS design, it's not obligatory to use ACS design. That is the one, the capability that we do the design for you. But let's say you wanna do, you wanna join with the creative team, and you wanna create that motion, you just send us the file. We just asked to allow us 24 to 48 hours at least to be able to get airport approval, to be able to upload the contact. But it's very seamless. There's no cost associated with the video. The only cost that you will see is for static options, in which you will have to print and produce, and as well installed and removed, if any. That is the only time that you will see a change-out fee. In digital, you will not see that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Davis?
That was repeating my question. If you could change it out, basically be able to have different options, so that you are, if we wanted to promote something, if we wanted to put it out there, is to be able to switch those screens. So that's really what I was going to say. And then, if we wanted to change the yellow or something like that, I like the "You're already here," or "You've arrived," and those kinds of things, because to me, it's the proximity to the airport that we want people to understand. So, I don't know that I'm married to that final look of it, but I really do like the messaging behind it. So, I would also be for package two. Thank you.
Like I said, this is just thought starter for us, you know, just being creative, and the feedback that you have provided. But definitely for the final designs, we just get more involved into communication to be able to design the final results when it comes to the campaign in there. Also, as a reminder, with digital, you have four different options that you could upload at once, and you can have kinda like that rotation. So you're not married to that one in particular. You can actually rotate into that, as well change at any point in time for that creative.
Thank you. Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor. I see the, I see on package two, the tension banner flag, and then the displays. So in 3 and 4, obviously, you're gonna have one tension fabric banner and two displays. Is that correct? What, 24 screen, what is 24 screen in the black? I know what the screen, and I saw the digital, but what does 24 screen mean?
Yeah, I'm just gonna go back to the map. So right here, it's 24 individual screen throughout the baggage claim. So it hits 100% of bag claim.
There's 24 screens in there?
24 screens.
And now?
In Terminal, so if you're gonna see, sorry.
Okay, I got you. So there's 24 screens. Is it just Dania Beach in a screen, or is it rotated with other digital?
It rotates with other advertisers.
And how, okay, so how many other options, and how often does that come up?
It says it up top, 220-second loop, and you get a 10-second spot. From what I know, it's not 100% occupancy, so it is predicated on how many advertisers are active at the moment, which I can check and get back to you on.
You see that, right? So that means every 220 seconds, it goes up one time. It's like, so every 220 seconds, it goes up one time, right?
Correct.
For 10 seconds. Okay, just wanna make sure everybody understands that. So it's not, it's not just Dania running the loop. It's, there's another nine more, there's another. There's another 20 other people up there going on.
There's just, you know, it's a loop. It goes, you know, rotating into the clients.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from my fellow commissioners? Vice Mayor?
All right. This just seems like a lot of money for a very short period of time during hurricane season, when we don't get as many people traveling here. And I didn't see anything on there as far as, and I'm not trying to be negative. This is, there is a purpose for the advertising in the airport, and I get it. And you even put like 96% or something is restaurants, or retail, or things like that. There's nothing there specifically about cities. So, like, when somebody's arriving at the airport, they already know where they're staying. They're not going to one of our hotels, because they already know where they're staying. They have their trip planned out, for the most part. Unless we have something really specific that we wanna put on there to get people to come and see, I just, it just seems like an awful lot of money for a very short period of time, and a very limited amount of people that it might grab. It's my only comment.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner James?
Yes, do we have numbers for, to, I mean, because that's an interesting take, but I would like to see, like, the numbers of travelers that we have. I know that the airport is one of our economic engines here in the county, so.
It is, yeah. We can provide.
Yeah, I'm not asking.
Yeah, we can provide projections when it comes to, like, future, and how we'd have in the past within those given months. That's something that we have the data that we can supply in there as well, you know. When you mentioned about the likelihood of someone visiting that city when they actually have planned things. So yes, that is a valid, like, concern into that matter. I mean, I would say, like, for your campaign, what I would focus on, on people actually arriving into that to visit one of your attractions, when it comes to the restaurants, the casinos, and so on, that we have seen a lot of positive results into that matter. But also, in addition to that, we have data on which to apply that people normally plan their next vacation while they are on vacation. So this would be the top destination that we're gonna be reaching when they are returning into that destination. So if you have a really good time in the Florida area, in a lot of the area, say, Dania Beach, they would most likely come back to that, and that's why they're trying to attract. So you can have two type of messages on, "Here you are," but also, when you return, "Return to us."
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So that's kinda what I'd like to see. I'd like to see if you have data that shows people that see these ads will come back the next time, and they'll plan to be here. If you have that information, that would be great.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I know myself, if I go someplace, I know where I'm going already. I've already made my plans. Now, a restaurant, that's different. I might choose a restaurant because I see it advertised. Or I might choose, I don't know, a particular, like, an excursion, you know, like the Everglades. I know there's a whole thing there about the Everglades. But, just in general, and, you know, and we're not, we're trying to advertise for the city, not for any particular business or entity here. So I just wanna be careful that we're not stepping on toes with that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We can provide the data. We have had really good success throughout our portfolio when it comes to city placements, and that we can show creative of other cities and what they have done, and the results that, I mean, for that, the result is more into their proprietary information, but most likely, you know, what we can showcase is the likelihood of a frequent flyer on what they do while they're on vacation, and how they plan their next vacation into that matter. And that's what in the slide number two, I was trying to go back to it, but I'm having the technical difficulties in there. But that, what it shows, that data, is the likelihood of a frequent flyer, which travels three-plus times a year, go and visit those destination, and how they plan their vacation around while they are seeing that airport ads in there.
Thank you. Commissioner James?
Yes, I just wanted to say, I recently traveled to Texas this past weekend, and although I thought I knew what I was gonna do, I got everything that I wanted to do off of Google. So I'm not sure if we are going to do, do you guys tie in, like, the taglines? And, I mean, or the tag words from SOE, and those types of things that would be popular? So if someone searched Dania Beach, or certain keywords that you have on your messaging, that it would move Dania Beach up in the SOE process?
So what, something that you can do is provide QR codes. QR code had done a really good, big compact, and a lot of advertisers utilize the QR code within their display. So they actually have that, and then you can use that as kinda like a data tracking for yourself, to really track your ROI. Not only that, it's you'll be able to kinda like grab that information once they input the data into that URL code that they will go into. So that's something that you can utilize within your actual space and your creative itself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody, anybody else? All right, thank you guys very much for your presentation. Very informative.
Thanks for having us.
Commissioner Davis?
This was a presentation, so I'm just wondering if we could come back and get the data that was requested, and then if it would come back as a discussion and possible action item the next time.
Commissioner James?
But couldn't we decide collectively which one we liked first, and then still have the, like, we can move forward once we get the data, or we can see if we have enough to move forward, or what everyone's thought on this is? What are your thoughts, Mayor?
You know, we've discussed this at length, multiple times. We've had multiple workshops on this. You know, we have presentation, and, you know, like I said, I see the point of airport advertising, but I just don't think it fits with our city and what we're trying to do at the current moment, you know. Maybe later down the line, if we have some money in our contingency fund, we could experiment and see if a four-month, $50,000 investment would work. I know that we have money in the contingency fund now, but I just feel like $50,000 could be better spent advertising our city with other means that we've discussed in our workshops for advertising. So those are my thoughts. If you wanna pick one of the two choices, you can.
Well, I can pick, I like number two, but it still doesn't mean that it's gonna move forward. That's what I'm trying to see. What is the direction here?
It's on, it's on the commission to vote on if you wanna move forward or not.
Okay.
You have to have your own opinion.
Sorry. Hold on, hold on, Commissioner Salvino?
I said, I suggest we move on, listen to a little bit more about it, see what we're gonna do, and if you have a choice, I'd pick number two. And I'd like to get a little bit more information that you requested, and we'll decide at that point.
Do we have consensus to move forward?
Okay, we'll put on the next agenda item. For next, next meeting. All right, thank you guys once again. All right, now move forward with our other item, item 3.4, Dania After Dark. It's an update on our presentation. It's from Parks and Rec. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, good evening. I'm Cassie Lauren, the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioner, City Manager. We're here to just provide a quick, brief update on where we are at with the planning of Dania After Dark and bringing these events back to the city. As you'll see before you, the first Dania After Dark that we're looking to bring back will be in October of 2023, and we're proposing that these events take place from the month of October through the month of May. With each individual event, we're looking to bring a specific theme to that Dania After Dark. On the piece of paper in front of you, we've outlined the dates as well as the themes. The idea of tying a theme to the event is that it will draw attendees, draw traction to the event. They will be coming out to the event for a specific reason, and a specific theme that will be held annually each year during that month. To go over the dates and the themes, the first date, as I mentioned, will take place October 14th of 2023. And the theme of the event will be Dania After Dark Oktoberfest. So it will incorporate all things Oktoberfest, some German food, a beer garden, things like that, to draw attendees out to the event. The November event will be November 11th, and the theme will be the Dania After Dark Birthday Celebration. This will celebrate all things Dania Beach, as that is the month that Dania was incorporated. The December event typically would take place in December. It used to be the tree lighting. We are going to combine that together and propose it as a light-up Dania Beach event, with all of the holiday events being showcased in one. Typically, the event falls the first Thursday of the month of December. The way this year's days fall in December, that would push it all the way back to December 7th. So we are proposing November 30th, so that we get a full month of lights at City Hall for the holiday events. The January event would be January 13th, and it would be the Dania After Dark Art Festival, featuring all things art. Art is big in our city right now, so what better way to celebrate it than have an art festival here as part of a Dania After Dark event? The February event will be February 10th, and it would be the Dania After Dark Dinner at the Hall, kind of a pun on Valentine's Day. We would have a specialized catered themed dinner under the stars at City Hall. The March event would be March 9th, and the theme would be Dania After Dark Wine Festival. The April event will be April 13th, with a Dania After Dark Blues and Barbecue Event. And then, finally wrapping up, on May 11th, with a Dania After Dark Taste of Dania Beach Event, where all the local restaurants from Dania Beach can come out and showcase their food and their offerings to the community and the attendees. Each one of these events will focus on having a kid's zone, a kid's area, because we want these events to be family-friendly and have a family component of them, so something for the kids to do as well. We'll have live music, arts and crafts vendors, a stage, food vendors, et cetera, on top of the themes that we have planned for the event. We have decided or talked about rebranding the logo of the event, because we are bringing this event, you know, new and exciting to the city. So the logo that we have looked at is the logo that is on the top of the page in front of you, with kind of a neon vibe. It's the Dania After Dark building off of that idea. We have actively been planning these events. We've met with vendors, we've met with contractors already. We met with Dania Point to go over these dates, to make sure that they do not conflict with any of the events that Dania Point is doing. And they have signed off on it and given their approval. They've given us some recommendations, actually, for the wine festival side of things, as well as the Taste of Dania Beach, because they do host a similar type event there. But they all host theirs as one event, instead of two individual events. We have had Bill Harris has been involved with a number of our meetings, so that we get their expertise. We're working on sponsorship packages. He's assisting us with that from that standpoint. And we are currently actively recruiting and interviewing for our Special Events Manager, which will be the point person for the hosting of these and planning of these events. Some of these events, you may have a paid component to it. As a beer garden, you can't, would not be free to the community. A wine event would not be free. But those things are all things that we're still in the early planning stages of. And that's a quick briefing of where we stand with it.
Thank you, Cassie. Did you guys hire a new promoter?
So that Special Events Manager will work with contractors that will come in to assist with the planning of some of the events, the beer aspect of it, things like that. And they will assist with the marketing on that side of it as well. We met with Renaissance, a gentleman with a company called Renaissance, and he is very versed in the marketing promotion side of it, things. So he would be willing to help us get information out.
So our new marketing, I mean, our new events coordinator will be handling the contracts?
Will handle the contracts, and work with, one of the specific ties is they'll work directly with the PIO and our new Director of Marketing and Public Information that we're bringing on here.
Through the mayor, I was, not only are we gonna, we're gonna be hiring the Special Events Manager, but also the Director of Communications and Marketing.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner James?
Yes, just, I know that we typically do Art and Seafood Festival in April. I'm not, just be aware that we might have two events, that, two big events that may happen back-to-back. And so, I know that Parks and Recreation was huge in assisting with the Art and Seafood celebration. And so I, I know that Parks and Recreation was huge in assisting with the Art and Seafood Celebration this year, so just keep that in mind. I mean, we haven't, we usually do it, um, the first of April, but that's a Monday, so I'm, I'm not sure if we're doing it the 6th or 30th of May, I mean, March. So we didn't discuss that yet, so just keep that on your radar.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner James, Vice Mayor?
Just a couple of observations. You have the, on the November and the December events, the November event is also Veterans Day. I don't know if we want to incorporate something related to that as well.
So we will always be incorporating portions of the holiday events in, within our recreational activities in our rec centers. So those won't be the main focus of the Dania After Dark theme, but we will incorporate it somehow, some way with our Parks and Recreation Centers, as well as, you know, we may feature some of, whatever that rec center does might be featured at the Dania After Dark in the kids' area, or something to that effect.
One of the things that we also discuss particularly in, in November is, for example, the presentation of, of the colors before the band. So like, like Cassie said, not only are we going to be doing this in our after-school programs and throughout the weeks leading into Veterans Day or any of these special events that are in the calendar, but also we'll bring an element of those things into the Dania After Dark.
Okay. My other comment was, for the December one, I know traditionally we do the tree lighting on the first Thursday of the month, and November 30th is a Thursday. But if we're doing Dania After Dark consistently on Saturdays, why not do that on the, the first Saturday of December?
So we had a conversation about that, actually. And one of the reasons we're proposing to keep it a Thursday is you move it to that Saturday, you're up against a number of other holiday events. One of the benefits of us right now doing it on a Thursday is it's easy for us to secure the entertainment, the ice skating, the synthetic ice skating rink, the bounce houses we want, because we do it on a Thursday. We move it to a Saturday, everyone does it then, so it's much more difficult, and it's a premium cost to do it on a Saturday.
Okay.
So that's the concept of behind keeping it Thursday.
Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Davis?
Well, my colleagues kind of took some of my questions there, but I really just have some comments. I really like the new, fresh look of the Dania After Dark logo. I think it really is, um, it makes everything more exciting. I like the fact that you guys have the different themes. I am just, and I'm glad that you worked with Dania Point to make sure that there was no conflicts. I just want to make sure that we look at all the calendars, not just Dania Point's calendars, because a lot of times, well, I just remember last year, we had certain conflicts with different dinners, different sponsorships, and so if we could just make sure that we look beyond that, uh, Dania Point to, to, to look at any major conflicts that the commission regularly attends, but.
Okay.
And Maxine can do that.
All right, we'll, we'll follow up with Maxine and just make sure that she confirms. Anything else?
Okay, no, this is, this is very refreshing, it's good to see that we're going to bring this back in October. And thank you guys for your hard work on it. I know, I know you put a lot of effort into getting this revamped, so.
We're excited.
It's going to come back better than ever, and I'm sure the residents are excited.
We're excited.
Yeah, the residents are excited too.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, we have a special event request from Emily Wirely, on behalf of Dania Live, to host Cinco de Ma- Cinco de Mayo Fiesta at Dania Point. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner James, have a second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
For both of them, for.
Yes.
Yes. Both special event requests have been approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, now for item four, well, this is for the whole section for proclamations. These are requests for proclamations. Proclamation approval from National Association of Women in Construction by Vice Mayor Llewellyn, the Dan Marino Foundation for National Autism Acceptance, which is sponsored by Commissioner Davis, and Lupus Awareness Month, which is sponsored by me. These are three proclamations that we're going to be presenting. We do need approval from the commission, so do I have a motion?
Proclamations.
I have a motion from Commissioner James.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, passes unanimously. Okay, now we'll move on to citizen comments. And we will start with Mr. Sean DeRosa. Mr. DeRosa, please come up, state your name and address.
Sean DeRosa, 408 Southeast Fifth Street. A city official's text message to City Manager Anna Garcia, December 29th, 2022. Hi, the situation with Sean DeRosa complaint is getting out of control. We have to provide compliance for our code. No one should have to live like this. I just got off a call with him, and I can clearly hear the blaring music. A $250 fine does not send the message. Please consider if you live there, thanks. While nothing has happened to bring the repeat multi-time music noise code violators into compliance with increasing and escalating fines, the last six months of public records have revealed errors, reckless misconduct, incompetence, acting in bad faith, acting inconsistently and outside the scope of the office of the city attorney. For example, the noise ordinance reads specifically, "With respect to music, the detection of a rhythmic bass reverberating type sound, beat or cadence shall be deemed plainly audible, and that uninvited noise shall be deemed unreasonably loud if it's plainly audible across the property line and interferes with a person's peaceful enjoyment of their home. Our city attorney has incompetently and in error misrepresented that the radio noise music had to be heard specifically only from the front property line. That's wrong and incorrect. Consequently, in November, the city attorney incorrectly and in error dismissed my magistrate hearing against the noisy property owners and said I had no evidence when I played my audio recording for loud music noise crossing over my interior property line disturbing the peaceful enjoyment of my home. This is not right and shows clear incompetence and misconduct by the city attorney. Additionally, the city attorney clearly acted outside the scope of their office and told the noisy music property owner on a recording to contact the city attorney, and the city attorney would also have me investigated. So now the city attorney is helping the noisy property owner retaliate against me, revictimizing my wife and I. The city attorney is on a second audio recording from December, saying the city attorney was giving the noisy property owner preferential treatment and had in fact met with the noisy, noisy property owner that has caused all the long-term noise disturbances and illegal parking approximately over 40 times over the last 10 months. Again, improper misconduct, overstepping the office's boundaries and operating outside the scope of the city attorney's office. This misconduct is prejudicial and has created a conflict of interest. The city attorney is not immune or exempt as an officer of the court from being held accountable by the Florida Bar Rules of Professional Conduct for competency errors, misconduct, conflicts of interest, conduct that is prejudicial, conduct that is overstepping their boundaries and outside, and operating outside the scope of their office. The city, the city staff, and the city attorney cannot act incompetently, reckless, and in bad faith. The public records reviewed also uncovered multiple false inaccurate police, BSO police reports, and additional BSO sergeant misconduct of actually lying and closing out a call that the sergeant never went to and handled. Further, we have reviewed what appears to be a corrupt, dirty BSO deputy.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa, that's enough for your comments, I appreciate it. Okay, next, let's have your father, John DeRosa, please come up. Please avoid being redundant, sir, or I will cut you off. Thank you. Name and address, please.
John DeRosa, 131 Southeast Third Avenue, 106. Hapsuring the favors being asked for by the multiple property owners to create a false and accurate police report to conce- conceal the property owners illicit unlawful conduct, and the BSO deputy appears to coordinate, collude, and assist owners so they cannot be held liable for their unlawful conduct and violate the city noise music ordinance. The BSO deputy assured the property owners that it's what he has done previously all the time for the specific multiple favors of the property owners. Asking from the BSO deputy, this audio/video recording appears to be corrupt, dirty, misconduct, and needs to be promptly investigated by the authorities and the BSO deputy. The property owners should be held accountable in the type of unlawful coordination, collusion, and misconduct. Due to the misconduct and incompetent conduct, the prejudiced conflict of interest, how are the Dania residents supposed to have faith, full faith and trust and confidence in being treated fairly and impartially with complaints? And to the hearing brought before the city, the staff, and the attorney, the BSO staff regarding long-term loud noise music code violations impacting the quiet peaceful enjoyment of their home? How is the city going to assure Dania residents that they will fix these errors and misconduct? And assure Dania residents and that the city of Dania will do what is necessary to bring property owners into compliance that are repeatedly violating in the noise music ordinance with uninvited radio music noise crossing over property lines to disrupt residents' peaceful enjoyment of their home? Now that you have been clearly informed of these errors, incompetence, and unlawful misconduct among Dania city staff and BSO deputies, what are you going to do?
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Yes. Okay, next, let's have Vicki DeRosa. Uh, please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is.
Please state your name and address, ma'am.
Vicki DeRosa, force, I'm living 40, 408 Southeast 53, Dania. We have had the problem with our neighbors' low, loud radio music noise all, all the time. This, this issue has been constant for a very long time, and, and it's got worse in the last 10 months. I doesn't not, I, I doesn't let me enjoy my home in peace. I doesn't let me rest or, or sleep in peace, because of the loud radio music noise, is that, it doesn't let me read a book in peace, because of the loud music is hard for me to watch TV in, in peace. Because of the loud music, I cannot enjoy in peaceful afternoon or night in my backyard, par- patio in my home. Because of the loud radio music, the most important thing is that, is that the noise doesn't let me rest or sleep properly. Something that is very important for me, because I go to work very early every day, including weekends. The noise, the noise doesn't let me get my necessary rest for my next workday. Sometimes the noise is so loud that is, keeps me awake all night, prevents me from, from go to work the next day, and I have to stay home because I don't have the energy. Can you please help me with this problem with, with the loud radio music noise, so I can enjoy my home in peace? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. DeRosa. Okay, next, we have Mr. Ed Campion, please come up, sir, state your name and address.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, Ed Campion, 420 Southeast Fifth Street, 33 years. Deplorable and beyond comprehension. However, with this still being a public forum, somebody will fix what's broken. With, with now approaching 200 violations with no resolution, justice has to prevail. And the citizens have solved more difficult problems than this. There's a missing link somewhere. There's only two open questions, who and when will somebody step forward and do the right thing and give justice to this community?
Thank you, Mr. Campion. All right, next we have Mr. Brian Cunningham. Thank you, sir, please state your name and address.
Brian Cunningham, 509 511 Northwest Terrace, Third Avenue, Dania Beach. I'm here on behalf of Turn to Construction and wanted to let you know the update with the property, that we have a redevelopment in the neighborhood, it's affordable housing, and that we have broken ground and got into construction. Just want to let you know that we're up to date and the property will be done in June. And very excited about that, we've been entertaining several buyers to affordable home, uh, classes. And there's right now up to $90,000 through Broward County to, uh, uh, provide, um, home buyer assistance as well as another $2,000 for the mortgage tax credit. So I just want to give you that update, that, that we are changing land, help change the landscape in the Dania Beach area, and just wanted to give you that update as re- as a result of you granting us the opportunity to purchase the project and redevelopment.
Commissioner James?
Yes, um, he has some flyers, I, I'm not sure what the protocol is, but is he allowed to either put those out there in, in the front? Those are the flyers for, for people that wish to be, first-time home buyers to be a part of that, correct? Is that something that we could do, or d- does it go through a certain protocol? City manager, I, I'm not sure, the informational flyers that are right here on the front.
You could put it outside.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I'll put it, and it's also on the website, so I will send it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner James, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Up next, we have, uh, Joanie Van Ostrin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joanne Van Ostrin, 3372 Southwest 44th Street. This is regarding public hearing number five. Being part of the city of Dania Beach for over 30 years, I've seen a lot of positive growth and changes. We can all agree, progress is very important.
If it's the public hearing, you should probably wait for the public hearing item.
Okay, then, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Joanie. Okay, we'll do Pat Wright, please. Same, okay. Is Jeanette Lago the same? Yep, Southwest 44th, okay. Leslie Kevils? Kevlis, Leslie Kevlis. Please state your name and address.
Leslie Kevlis, 311 West Marina Drive, Estates of Fort Lauderdale. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Attorney. We're friends, we've known each other a long time. I have never once come here and asked for anything. But tonight I'm here as a member of the Board of Directors at the Estates. The recent storm that we had brought up old issues with the Estates of Fort Lauderdale. We flood. Light rains, we flood. It's been going on for so many years that when, before he retired, Dominic Orlando came out to my house, and we walked the streets, and he saw right away what the problem was. We have little to no drainage. And at that time, he said the mon- the city had no money for that. So during this last storm, I know Candido was at the house at the Estates, and I heard that he said the same thing. There's no drainage, there's no place for the water to go. Well, I don't know what we're going to do about it, but periodically you, the city has had drainage projects where lots of money was spent. It's time that you went west to the Estates. We have no drainage. And I had water up to my knees, I, I had fish on my front lawn. Now, that was a one-off, but normal rains, and we're getting ready for the rainy season, we need help. We need your help, so, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kevlis. Yes, we just had a, a recent discussion regarding your, your concern, and, um, we're going to address it as soon as possible. Okay, next we have Joanna Grenet. Please state your name and address, Ms. Grenet.
Good evening, Joanna Grenet, 450 Southeast 7th Street, number 251. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Staff. Just like to say that we really, the Dania, I'm here on behalf of the Dania Beach Historical Society. And I just want to say a big, massive thank you to the mayor for his donation for us to present at the Arts and Seafood Festival, which was amazing. We had a great response. We had a map where people could post your pin in wherever they're from in the world. So hopefully one day that map will be filled with the whole world. And we had a scavenger hunt for the children, a tomato potting station in, for the tomatoes, but the adults loved it more than the children. We had the display of photos, which is always a hit with everybody. But like I say, we had a great response, and people are really, really into the history of Dania, so we have a lot to go on. I'd just like to say also, Vice. I'd just like to say also, Vice Mayor Llewellyn invited me to speak on behalf of the Historical Society at the Griffin Civic Association. We had a really nice time there. It was, I learned a lot actually from the residents there and the board. Commissioner Davis invited me to speak also at Visit Lauderdale with a quick rundown of Dania, the history, and I found out a few tidbits of grandpa's restaurant where I did a little presentation about that also. So thank you for inviting us. Also, recently, the Dania Beach Historical Society was recently invited to the Stranahan House Pineapple Jam 2023. They would love to do something with the Dania Beach Historical Society in the future as well, so we're reaching out, we're putting our feelers out there, mixing with the rest of Broward County as well, so I just wanted to let you all know. Also, I wanted to just speak about the Nyberg Swanson House. You may or may not know or have seen it, that the Nyberg Swanson House is actually on our logo now. It looks fantastic. I can share it all with you. I know obviously the floods, we just want to make sure that the water intrusion repair, restorative work that was done, that work was actually held up from the floods or has anybody been in there to check if there's been any floods in the house? And also in regards to the restoration of the house, we've been told that it will not start until 2024. As we have the money for it, the city, we've been told we have the money for it, then I just want to ask a simple question. Why do we have to wait till 2024? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grenet.
I don't have an update. It's a multi-phase. We're working with the Nyberg Swanson and also with the Women's Club.
Yeah, we have a million dollars set aside.
A million point five.
Million point five, yeah.
But we can have an update at the next meeting.
Okay.
Our Public Services Director will give an update at the next meeting.
Ms. Grenet will provide you with an update at the next commission meeting. Hey, Ms. Gadal. Please state your name and address.
Paula Gadal, 406 Southeast 3rd Street. I'm here about the flooding, so I was just wondering what the city will do about the flooding and the drainage. And what I don't understand is why they don't turn the pumps on immediately. I mean, we all, I'm sure, get the same news and our news tells us that we're getting really bad weather and cities, I mean, citizens get it together. I just don't know why the city doesn't put the pumps on immediately because I think if they did, it would help a lot. That's what I like to know. And I've never been to a meeting before and I don't understand why certain people don't get answers, but other people do. I don't know. What's with that?
Thank you, Mrs. Gadal. I appreciate your comments. Yeah, when it comes to the drainage on the southeast side, we, I know that the drain, well, the pump was, there was a piece that was broken before the storm happened. We replaced it. They need to be turned on manually, if I'm not mistaken, correct? I know that they had a float, some have a float switch.
Yeah, so there were no issues regarding the pumps in this last 101,000-year storm. It was basically, you know, 24 to 26 inches of rain that occurred here in the area of our city in Fort Lauderdale. We moved expeditiously to mitigate and to resolve the issues. I don't think that any city moved as quickly as we did. But so you are aware, at the last commission meeting, we had a presentation and the Office of the City Manager will continue to recommend to this commission that stormwater and infrastructure to be a priority.
Okay, I understand everything you said, but-
Ma'am, if you want to speak, you could come up to the, I know, it's fine, it's fine.
I understand what you're saying, but my just issue is I know there's been times in the past when the pump had not been turned on and the streets flooded out big time. And I know if the pumps had been turned on, it could have avoided a lot.
I don't know what has been done in the past, but what I can tell you, and we can bring that up at the next commission meeting, the amount of money that we've been able to seize from the federal government and from Tallahassee and the amount of projects that we have completed and that are in design, including being able to have the entire funding for the southeast drainage project is something that is a priority and what I will continue to recommend to the elected officials.
Okay, and that's great, but then like that gentleman said that lives in Fort Lauderdale, they need help also.
Yes, ma'am, we're aware. If anything, three feet of water definitely showed us our weak points in the city and we have assessed the whole entire city in our most vulnerable areas. And yes, we're actively planning and we're preparing for future storms, you know, and we're trying to take matters into our own hands with the assistance from the county and from the state as well. Okay, that's it for public comments.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized for one second?
Please.
I just want to go back to the presentations on the beach art just to get on the record so that we have a clear record that the beach art is going to cost $7,000. The artist's name is Marie Franco and this is from Commissioner James's discretionary funds from 2022.
Thank you very much for clarifying that, City Attorney. All right, now move on to public safety reports. Start with Captain Marks. Hold on, Captain, sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I wasn't going to start like this, but some of the comments that were made, if, you know, I hear comments like that about our employees, if anybody in this room thinks that I'm not going to take offense to it, they don't know me. We've responded out there hundreds of times. We document everything. We have great communication with code enforcement, the City Attorney. They have stacks of reports. If he didn't leave, I would be addressing him right now. All right, good, listen. Noise complaints are important. They're quality of life issues, but we handle other issues that might be important. But when you associate fabrication and misconduct with my deputies-
Absolutely.
That's unacceptable. If we make one error in a report when we've been out there hundreds of times, if it needs to be corrected, we'll correct it. We've done it. When we've been to the same place 100 times, we're going from a noise complaint, addressing it, to solving a homicide case or making a drug trafficking arrest, which, I'm sorry if our deputies get there a little late, we are quite busy. But I just wanted to make that clear. One of our great arrests we just made was a cocaine trafficking arrest, which resulted in the seizure of 51 grams of crack cocaine along with MDMA, amphetamine, oxycodone, and marijuana. $2,100 in a vehicle was also seized during this case. We made eight more arrests, including two directly related to a zero tolerance effort we had to combat the crimes and loitering around our convenience stores within the I know there have been quite a few homicides on TV cases. Our detectives located a suspect from another BSO jurisdiction homicide on the west side of Dania. They set up on the residence, observed the suspect do a drug deal in between two houses. It was a homicide suspect. He barricaded himself in the house, so we got two search warrants for each house and had our SWAT team execute him and he was taken into custody. New program we're starting on May 20th, I'll repeat this again, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we're taking 25 students from Olson Middle School to the Tiger Tail Lake Recreational Center for a day of aquatic fun and team building. The purpose of this event is to promote literacy. Each participant will receive a book, learn about water safety while having fun, and providing an opportunity for the youth to have one-on-one time with law enforcement. Oftentimes, youth encounter law enforcement on a bad day, whether it's an emergency situation or a traffic accident. So we wanted to provide the youth with an opportunity to engage and spend time with us in a positive light. Additionally, the team-building activities will allow them to work together and bond with us as they work towards achieving the goal for the day. Real quick story, on Wednesday, I believe it was Wednesday, April 19th, we had a memorial service for a fallen Dania Beach police officer. It was Officer James T. Thomas, November 22, 1949 to April 1977. He was shot and killed during an attempted armed robbery at a convenience store off of Griffin Road. Shortly thereafter, several members of the notorious outlaw's motorcycle gang was arrested in connection with that murder. So when we were at the cemetery doing our little service, I saw a gentleman ride up on a bike. Never seen him before, so I introduced myself to him before the ceremony and he said that he was a Dania Beach police officer and he worked with Officer James Thomas. I thought that was really cool because a lot of us BSO guys weren't around then and when he said his name, it rang a bell. I just had the carpet redone in my office and I found an envelope full of cards. I had his actual ID card from Dania Beach Police Department. So he lives in Dania and I actually found his badge too. So I thought it was really cool to be out of the job for so long and be able to reunite him with his Dania Beach Police ID card and a badge. So that was, I just thought that was really cool, out of the blue, because I remembered his name from seeing it on the card. Tim Cates.
Yeah, Tim Cates, yeah.
Super nice guy. So just wanted to share that, but that completes my report.
Thank you, Captain Marks. That's a great story and, you know, much respect for how you stand behind your staff and your people.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service and putting your life on the line for us.
Commissioner Salvino?
Danny, you know, just on that, a note on Tim, just, you know, along with what you found there, you know, Tim goes back to playing baseball with me at eight years old.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so just to show you how far he's been around the city, he also, as he was, he was the chief of Dania Beach and he was, I think, I think he was the first BSO chief when we transitioned from BSO. And he also worked for the city of Dania Beach back eight years ago as an intern off, he's the one that actually started working on our baseball fields because he actually ended up, after retirement, ended up coaching girls softball at South Broward High School for about 17 years. He does live in southeast Dania, so he does, he was also a lifetime member of the Dania Optimists Club, which does, I'm not sure if it exists anymore or not, but he just has been, I guess you could say, almost like a legend in our city for what he's done.
Wow, very nice.
I just wanted to share that much more with you since you found that, but, and I know that he drove up on a bike. It was not a motorcycle. He rides bicycle.
Bicycle.
Yeah, so just to share a few more moments with about Tim so that he is a well-respected man in the city of Dania Beach.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yes, he is. I walk by his house every morning.
Yep, he lives right there, no?
Mm-hmm. All right, Chief, you're up.
Thank you, Chief Pelisser.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, and the great citizens of Dania Beach. On Friday, April 7th, our units responded to a two-alarm fire in Davie at Alfie's Gun Club and Shooting Range. Dania Unit 17, led by Captain Melinda Holfetter, Driver Engineer Peter Eszeki, and Firefighter Thomas Johnson were one of the units to respond along with the rest of a contingency of Broward County Fire Rescue Units. So I got a letter from Chief Julie Downey from Davie Fire Rescue and basically she said, "Without your assistance, this fire could have been of a much greater disaster. Bringing this fire under control and helping us eliminate the hazardous conditions on site would have taken much longer without your participation and they are very grateful." So I just want to read that into record because, you know, when cities need help, we go there to help them and when we need help, we have cities come over and help us. And that leads me to talk a little bit about April 12th. So April 12th was a memorable day for everybody here in Dania Beach and I can tell you that the Fire Rescue Units were dispatched 183 times during that 24-hour period before the storm, during the storm, and after the storm. On April 13th, which was the next day, we, our call volume dropped down to only 54 responses. During our emergency responses that the day of the storm, our EOC and Web EOC was set up with communications missions entered with the coordination of Public Works and the city team. And I don't have to tell you what kind of team you already have, the city has here, but everybody works in conjunction and you've heard it from the City Manager multiple times in the last week or two, how everybody works together and pulls together. We have a great team and we were able to get everything or as much as we humanly possibly could get done and accomplished in a very short amount of time. We're also fortunate enough to have assistance from the city of Miami Beach. We coordinated with them and we deployed the resources they sent here to us. We had assistance from Florida Wildlife Commission. The FWC coordinated, sent a strike team. And I was at the station when they arrived and it was like the army was coming in. They came in with the high-water buggies and they, our firefighters were there, greeted them, and they jumped right on those buggies and they went out to work doing welfare checks, making sure that whatever citizen was in any kind of water that we couldn't get through with our trucks, that we were able to, you know, go over there and check on them, especially concentrating on the heaviest-hit areas in Dania Beach. So I just want to say again, we have a great team and we couldn't do it without your support, so thank you for supporting us and thank you for always being there for us and I just want to make sure that our citizens heard it from me. So thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Chief. Excellent report. Thank you. And yes, thanks for all the work from BSO firefighter and police officers on, you know, during that weather event. You guys were crack staff at it and, you know, our city staff did a wonderful job. Everybody worked cohesively as a team and it was great to hear you guys' reports. Thank you very much. Commissioner James?
Nope, that's for number seven. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda when we get there.
Okay. All right, you're getting a little ahead of me. All right. Okay. Well, thank you again for the public safety report. Now onto the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda? No? Commissioner James?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. I have a second from Vice Mayor Llewellyn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Consent agenda is passed unanimously. All right, we have no bids and requests for proposals. Now we move on to public hearings and we're going to start with item 9.1. Eve, if you could?
Absolutely. An ordinance of the City Commission approving an inter-local service boundary agreement with the City of Hollywood and Broward County for the contraction of certain lands located within the jurisdictional limits of the City of Hollywood and the annexation of the land by the City of Dania Beach, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This is second reading. I wanted to recognize that Andrea Wingate from the City of Hollywood is here. She's been very helpful with the whole process through, going through the City of Hollywood. City of Hollywood last month approved the second reading of their interlocal agreement. Approval tonight will finalize our version of the interlocal agreement and final reading should go to the city, the county commission in one reading. We'll pass it on to them tomorrow once this is approved. And once all of that is done, we will have annex 0.2 acres of land within our park area into the city of Dania Beach. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. And if we could just have the public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item?
In particular, thank you to Commissioner Salvino, who helped in the beginning with going to the City of Hollywood and then with our mayor, who has gone to the last two meetings at the City of Hollywood. Much appreciated.
Thank you, yes. A lot of work has gone into this by many individuals and, you know, thank you, Eve, for your work on this and thank you, Andrea, too. And you guys are very welcoming in the Hollywood Commission as well, so thanks to the Hollywood Commissioners. Give them a shout out here. Commissioner James?
I'll make a motion after your public call.
I already said this is a public hearing. No one's supposed to-
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you said what? Okay, I make a motion to-
Okay, I make a motion to, okay, somebody's talking.
Second.
Oh, no, it's not.
I have a motion from Commissioner James, I have a second from Commissioner Salvino. Can you call roll, actually? Elora? Elora?
Yes. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lawellin?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
All right.
Thank you again, Andrea, very much appreciated.
Okay. All right, you get out of here now, Andrea. Okay, so I'm actually going to change the agenda, I'm going to move up item 9.5 to the next discussion. So Eve, if you could read item 9.5, please.
Absolutely. It's a resolution of the City Commission approving the Town Homes Complex Site and Variance Applications for Property Owner Dania Town Homes 4580 LLC, whose property is located at 4580 Southwest 33rd Avenue in the city. Providing for conflicts and an effective date, this is a community development item. Let me go ahead and swear in anyone who's going to be testifying, including staff, on this application tonight. So anyone in the audience who would like to speak during the public hearing, not everybody has to stand up, but just please raise your right hand, so you can be sworn in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please be seated. Procedurally, staff goes first. Once any questions of the commission is, are made of staff, it will be then opened up to the applicant to speak, and then after that, it is the public hearing. Are there any disclosures to be had by the City Commission as to any communications received from the community at large or the developer?
Vice Mayor Lawellin?
I attended a community meeting with both the developer and the residents present, and spoke with both.
And can you remain impartial after all of those communications?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I just got, I just got an email, and just responded, we'll talk about tonight.
Is it by, from a resident?
Yes.
And what is the name of the resident? Do you remember?
God, I know where you're pushing buttons, no.
I know, I know, I know, but it's required for the public hearing process.
I have to look.
And can you remain impartial after the communication?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Are you waiting on me? This may take a while.
Okay, we'll come back to you.
We'll go to Commissioner Davis, we'll get back to Commissioner Salvino.
James is not here.
Mr. Davis?
I'm sorry. Yes, I've had several conversations and text messages and from, from the residents regarding this issue, and so I still can remain impartial. If you needed the exact names, I don't want to give you partial information, but I can give it, you know, at a later date, but I can remain impartial. Thank you.
Does the applicant have any objection to not having the specific information?
You're on, go ahead.
I have, Jeanette Lago.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gustavo Bolado, 346 Conservation Drive, Western Florida. I'm sorry, I can listen to the issue?
Do you have any, they just had general communications with the public on, on the application. Did you need to know the exact information as to the name and address, or are you okay with that, going forward?
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, did you have any communications?
No, I probably got an email, but I was, I wasn't able to check it. Yeah.
And we'll wait for, when she comes back, we'll just ask her if she has any communications. Please proceed.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. We're here again, I'm going to give you a brief. Give me just one second. Might be getting on the screens to go over the presentation.
Commissioner James, while we're waiting for the presentation to come up, I just wanted you to confirm for the record whether you had any ex parte communications.
Yes.
And if you could just make the disclosure on whether you can remain impartial.
I've had communications with the residents, and I can remain impartial.
Okay. So as previously stated in our previous City Commission meeting, the item is coming before you for a 12-town home development at 4580 Southwest 33rd Avenue. The property is a zone multifamily 16-dwelling unit per acre, and they're proposing 12 units, although the land use designation is for 10 units per acre. This is the aerial of the property. Understanding the drainage issues presented by the millennial flooding occurred on April 12th, the developer will be required to meet the engineering and civil standards from the stormwater master plan from the city. The background of the property, it came before you on March 14th for the first hearing, and the item was postponed as per applicant's request, because City Commission requested more community outreach that took place on April 3rd, and it was an opportunity for the residents of the area, as well as for the developer, to explain in detail and ask questions on what was proposed. Between the residents and the developer, they agreed for, to put on the bylaws of the HOA not to allow, or to prohibit, actually, vacation rental activities and parking on the right-of-way. So that will be coming forward at the bylaws documentation. As previously mentioned, the site plan for the property itself is a construction of 12-unit town home development, and they're requesting two units on the flex units to be approved, if tonight is the date. There are no violations on the property, as previously mentioned. This is the development proposed, two rows of six units stacked on top of each other. The property will have all the parking surrounded, and the circulation of the traffic will be in and out without any issues. These are the renderings of the development, what it looks like. It will be three stories, however, the third story is, has a flex room and an open terrace or open roof deck activity per unit. As well as the site plan request, they are also requesting a variance on the property for 216 feet, whereas the code requires 150 feet length of the building. And the applicant has provided enough justification that it's actually included in your packets for all the details that they're complying with the code. They went through the DRC review, and as of the, there are outstanding comments, we're still recommending approval, as well as the budgetary impact. They will be improving the tax role of the city, paying for public art impact fees, as well as recreation and open fees. The strategic plan, the project meets the objectives and the values of the city's strategic plan, and staff recommends approval of the site plan variance and unit, and flex unit application. And the applicant is here, if you have any further questions?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, Commissioners, any, any comments? Start with you, Commissioner Davis.
Well, just had a few observations. As I said, I talked to some of the residents here, and I just want to make sure that we're taking into careful consideration the storm that we just went through. I know that this particular area has, was flooded several, several days after the storm, and I think that from the questions and the inquiries that I've been getting, you know, the residents believe that, you know, this would be better used for drainage, or for parking, or for other, for other purposes. And I just want, you know, from an expert opinion, the difference between, you know, building this structure, how do we ensure, you know, what flooding protections are we going to take for drainage? And they were also asking for additional piping and things like that. So I just want to explain in layman's terms the effect of the infrastructure with the flooding, so that everybody's clear.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Dean Chiracunozaid, and I'm the Deputy Public Service Director and City Engineer. Actually, this development is going to help the drainage issues that we have, because after it is built, they are going to keep the rainwater on their side. The way that it is, the rainwater is not kept in the site. That is one of the reasons that we got flooded. It's not the only reason, but one of the reasons. So anytime that any development comes, we look at it in the engineering plans, and we make sure that they keep the rainwater in the site. So normally, it's supposed to help, it's not going to work against us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Denzer. Vice Mayor Lawellin?
I also think part of the concern that the community has, because I will tell you, I went to the community meeting, and in general, the residents were pleased with the renderings, they were pleased with the answers that they got, and now that this flood has happened, we are now having people changing their minds, and are now upset about this. And I think part of the reason is not just because of the flooding that occurred over there, but part of it's because, we had this workshop last week, and one of the questions that I know I asked was, what were the other projects? Have we considered the additional projects out west that are going to need to be done? That particular street was not included on the list. I know that the city is still assessing the different projects that are going to be done, but if somebody, I don't care who, could speak to this and discuss some of the plans that we have for some of the western community, as far as some of the drainage issues that we discovered during, or discovered and have identified as being serious concerns for drainage.
If I may, through the mayor, we're, we're going to be, we had a preliminary presentation to you, and for the next two months, we're going to be working on all the details. Not only are we going to bring additional locations out west, but for example, we had not discussed Gulfstream, we had not discussed 12th on, on the northwest section. So our goal would be to touch all the quadrants in the city. So when we come back in June, in June, we will give you more of those specifics. But as, as Denzer said, all the new developments have a certain criteria that will mitigate the flooding. It would actually help versus not doing anything and leaving things as is. So we've elevated the, the criteria, and, and obviously, the flooding, the pipes, the infrastructure is a priority, and we've been working with that, with Candido, with Eleanor, with Corinne, and our entire team.
Okay. Thank you, manager. Yes, please.
Just one thing, there's also an ordinance tonight, which will be for first reading. It's item number 9.3, and it's related to water and sewer storm regulations, and basically, these are an enhanced criteria for stormwater regulations that are being implemented. So this project would be required to comply with these enhanced provisions.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. All right, this is a public hearing, let's open up to the public. We'll start with Joanie, Mrs. Van Ostron. Please state your name and address.
Joannie Van Ostron, 3372 Southwest 44th Street. Being part of the city of Dania Beach for over 30 years, I've seen a lot of positive growth and changes. We can all agree, progress is very important in the involvement of a city and its smaller communities within it. My concern is that now the city of Dania is not considering the aftermath of what overdeveloping may cause, in particular, the development of townhomes with the maxing out of multiple units. Two major concerns with these approved homes is the congestion of the smaller communities in the city, and most importantly, the experience we had with the recent flooding. It bears to question, what is the priority of the leaders of the city? It seems as if it is to progress to the city, the city to the point of overcongestion for short-term glory. Again, opinion. Obvious disregard and preservation of the elusive charm of the city, and ignoring the negative effects on the infrastructure. We ask that you slow down and go to the different communities, speak to the residents, and assess for yourselves the appropriateness of multifamily structures in certain areas. See it as if this is where you live. Will this benefit the community, or will this harm it in long term? It seems as if there's a greater agenda that supersedes the opinion and living conditions of your current residents and those in the future. Again, opinion. We're not saying that multifamily units should not be considered in the city of Dania. We are implying that there should be judicious and detailed assessment of the communities that these proposed developments are considering for construction. I will specifically speak of the aisles north of Griffin, west of I-95, because this is where I live. This is a quiet community with a seaside vibe due to many homes having ocean access. The ocean access in itself is exclusive and limited nowadays, which adds to the charm. Multifamily homes have been constructed, changing the feel of the community. This will eventually lead to overcongestion without an updated infrastructure for drainage. This leads to the point of the flooding that recently occurred. This past month, we witnessed what can happen without the proper drainage. It seems that the city is more concerned with building up, on, building up than working on the foundation of where our homes sit. The streets where these town, where these townhomes were flooded, up to this middle of my SUV car door. Several cars and SUVs were stranded, and there are still more townhomes to come. In time, our homes won't have a chance with canals in the back and the impaired drainage system, which will be further complicated with these new builds flooding our streets in the front. This will make it unsafe and undesirable to live here, not just for us, but for future residents as well. Also, I feel the leaders of our cities have failed us with an outdated multi-home zoning rules, specifically in the aisles. It is time to reassess this rule and truly abandon it for future building. The elusive beauty of the aisles will be lost to the overcongestion and buildup. Yes, we need to prog, we need to progress, but we must not disregard the importance of preservation. Slow and steady wins the race. Let's do this right, and make Dania a progressive city the smart way, one in which we deserve, we preserve the beauty and allure that is already here. Build up in appropriate locations, but not in the communities like the aisles that are surrounded with so much water. It is time to slow down and reassess. Also, remember quality over quantity. People may also say that the flooding was an isolated event due to the unpredictability of the recent storm. I see it as a warning. The aisles is a gem in our city, and I would hate to see it being destroyed by our recent and current leaders of the city of Dania. We don't want to add that to your CV.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Van Ostron, for your comments. We'll go to, next to Pat Wright. Please state your name and address, ma'am.
Pat Wright, 4391 Southwest 34th Lane, Dania Beach. I'm speaking in behalf of my husband, who couldn't make it tonight. He's a civil structural engineer, he designs roads and bridges and a lot of other things, and he's familiar with flooding and type stuff, that kind of stuff. He says, "It's not the building that bothers us so much, it's the spread of water that they affect." Yes, they say that they, the thing can, the building here that we're talking about, can contain 100% of the water on their property. However, how about the water that would naturally have spread onto that area from another area that cannot now spread it? Normally, I'm not reading right, I'm sorry, from the other areas that now cannot spread normally into it, but has to spread to somebody else's property and then flood them. I'm very concerned about the flooding. That whole area was flooded really bad, and they say that they can contain that themselves, but we have to take the risk in a scenario. I know we need to change laws in, in South Flor, Florida because of this type of thing, and one of the seminars that my husband went to, it was on flooding. And the, and the guy said that was talking about, it's not so much that the water is coming up, it's that South Florida is literally sinking. We need to be serious about this, and we need to start today and work on Tallahassee, start changing laws for us down here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. I appreciate your comments. And next, we have Mrs. Jeanette Lago. Please state your name and address, ma'am.
Jeanette Lago, 3360 Southwest 44th Street. So this is not my first rodeo up here. I keep coming back with the same concerns, and now it's just even, even bigger. And why is it bigger? Is because this rain that we had, I know we want to call it, it's a, it's a freak of nature, but, you know, it's more going to become our norm. So I think that we need to address it as such. I'm happy to hear Anna, with her priority of the infrastructure, because obviously that was the first thing that I wanted to mention, right? Not just the drainage, but also the traffic. And, and I feel, which I know that, you know, Joanne also said, you know, I, I feel that we agree with progress, but we want safety first. And I feel that we're just building and building and building, and that we cannot, and I know that you guys have engineers and everybody else that does reports, but if you live there, right, you feel it, and it's, it's just becoming where, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen. And so we would like to see a moratorium, if possible. We're not saying, "Don't build," and it's not anything with them, these are very nice folks. Not personal with you guys at all, okay? You know, we, we would like to see... You know, we would like to see where, let's slow it down, let's take care of our infrastructure, let's for sure be positive that we can sustain the growth and then let's grow, okay? That's what we're asking for. We're not saying, no, don't build. Also, and I just wanted to clarify, my, I disagree with Lori and her opinion or assumption from the meeting. I was at the meeting and the meeting went, I guess it was okay because it wasn't really made very clear that the two flex townhomes still was coming for a variance. It was kind of like said, yeah, it's 12 townhomes. So we felt like, there's nothing we can do. Then we get a notice in the, in the mail and that's where we see that, wait a minute, it's not a for sure thing. And that's where we all had our concerns and we wanted to come here to say, if there's an opportunity to say, you know, you're already getting your 10 units, build your 10 units, but maybe use that extra space of the two units for the drainage, for parking, for everything else, for greenery and, and, you know, trees that we're losing. So that's our concern and that's why I wanted to make it clear that the meeting was not, everyone was all happy and go lucky. It's just that the way it was presented and the way that we saw our notice in the mail was very different. And then I know that there's been conversations also about zoning. The only way we're going to change this is through zoning, but nothing, nothing gets done. So again, I don't know if that's something for reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lago. Is anybody else in the public wishes, wish to speak? Sir? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Gary Troy, 4640 Southwest 33rd Avenue. Thank you for being here tonight. I think the development will be a positive improvement on the city of Dana Beach and for the county as well because, for multiple reasons, we have a housing shortage and that's a bigger priority than people's concern about flooding. The flooding is going to occur with or without the development. It's a non-unique issue and it's a relevant issue. And affordable housing is the biggest issue. I get phone calls every day, every single day from people that want to rent apartments, every day. And we need to build to accommodate these people that want to live in our community and we want to respect and appreciate anybody that wants to live in Dana Beach with open arms and open hearts. And we've got to be a city that's open and receptive and responsive to change and improvement and growing. And I welcome all the people in the audience to grow along with me and with the commissioners as we become the best city in the world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Troy, would you mind filling out a speaker consent form and give it to our clerk at the end?
No, ma'am, it's three, it's limited to three minutes. Commissioner Salvino?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, the public hearing is now closed.
To address the residents, you know, I don't want to seem like I'm disrespectful to anybody, so I listen to your opinions and I'm gonna give you mine. And because I know that every single person sitting in this dais tonight, plus our, our staff, has taken a beating in the last two weeks from the rain that we had, that, that we had. I mean, our city, I can't believe how quickly and efficiently and whether you all believe it or not, how we stepped up and we cleaned our city up and emptied a lot of roads out. It was, it's, you'd have no idea. It wasn't just your neighborhood. I mean, I've lived in my house for 70 years and my house got flooded. And, you know, and I live in Melika Gardens and so, you know, everybody complains about the flooding and this one particular time. And I know that flooding is going to happen no matter how often it rains. Do we have flooding problems in the city of Dana Beach? Absolutely. We've had flooding problems. We were, we were privileged to annex Broward County many, many, Broward County's property west of 95 many years ago and probably didn't have that. You brought up a good point about that we're sinking. We probably are sinking. And the floods, the floods are getting different. I can see it myself that they're getting, you know, deeper and deeper every time it rains. But, you know, it's not just your area and it's not just that area, it's not just that. And everybody says, we want this fixed. We want this fixed. We want our area. Well, I hope you have about $150 million or $200 million to fix it, which is not in your tax roll because right now, we're talking about maybe possibly raising your taxes and your sewer assessment, if that's right, $100 a year just to get the planning done, which is over $15 million, just to plan it. But there's a good side to that because with that, we are able to present ground shovel-ready to the state and the government to get funding for free that won't cost the taxpayers money. But if we sit there and tell the taxpayers next about all the flooding that we keep hearing about, that we all want to fix, we tell you that we don't get the funding and it's going to cost you another $2,000 on your tax roll every year to get that $200 million to fix our flooding, then you guys are going to be really screaming at us up here, okay? So, you know, we're, we understand and we understand that, you know, they brought up the 9.2, I think it's come, whatever it was, about the, the way we're trying to secure the, the water on the, on site. I know what they're doing. They're going to have little gullies behind the house that retain the water on the properties that's there. I understand you may not, you may not have been so bad before the flooding, but I can tell you, whether that property goes up or not, that street's going to flood. It's going to flood for the next five years because you just can't get it done that quickly. All the, all the infrastructure's got to be designed. We have to put it out for bid. We have to get the product in here. We have to put it out and do it. It's not a snap of the fingers and I, you know, I don't mean to sound disrespectful by any means, but you have no idea how many emails and texts and phone calls in the middle of the night and stuff that I got from the neighbors that are my friends that I grew up with and they're mad at me because I don't, I can't snap my fingers and get it done. It's frustrating for us that we can't provide to the residents of Dana Beach the answers right now to fix your problem. So we do the best we can up here, but the flooding is not going to go away tomorrow. It's not going to go away next year. But I can promise you one thing, our staff and our city manager is all over it. I, I'm very proud of what she's presented to us and I'm very proud of what finances presented to us to try to start alleviating this problem. I had to get this off my chest because everybody comes in here, it's about the flood, it's about the flood, it's about the flood. It's a flood. It's a big flooding problem. And I can tell you that you need to buckle down and hope for the best until we can get it fixed, but I promise you, the city of Dana Beach is going to get it fixed. It's just going to take time. So please understand.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino.
Well, that, we're not, I'm not an engineer. I don't know if you are or not, but, so I don't give my opinion on that. I just listen to the professionals out there that have gone to school, learned this stuff and respect their opinion and try not to micromanage that person that has gone out there and been respected through the community by learning what he's been educated to do. That's how I take the approach.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Commissioner James?
Yes, a few questions about the project. So by, by code, they're allowed to build 10?
Correct. So by right, they're allowed to have 10 units and they're requesting two as a flex.
Okay. And just for clarification, for, from all the comments that I've heard, this is not a, an affordable housing project, correct?
No.
Okay, so that doesn't help with that. Okay. And for the art fee, it says up to $250,000. Does that mean it could be $5,000? Like, do we have an about range?
It is a percentage based on the value of work and based on that, we calculate the art fee.
So how much was it?
The maximum.
Oh, it is the maximum. It says up to, so I didn't know if that meant, it is $250,000 or?
Actually, that's in the report. Okay, recreation and open space would be $21,900, but the art fee would be up to $250,000 because it's a percentage calculated.
So what would be the number?
I don't have it right here in front of me right now.
Okay. Oh, all right, Eleanor.
So she did put the maximum value because it is based on the value of construction at time of permitting when it comes in. So it could be up to $250,000. They have not mentioned that they want to install public art on site, so it could be the maximum amount depending on the value of his project.
Okay, I was just trying to get a roundabout number, like if it's $10,000, $20,000, $100,000. He should if he's shovel-ready. Okay, well, we can get back to it. I, I just wanted to know that number. I mean, because from looking at it, it seems like it could be $250,000, but now it might be $10,000.
He's saying, um, close to $10 million for his project? So at .5%, that would be, one second.
Just a roundabout number, it has to be.
$50,000.
$50,000, okay. See, that's, that's different than reading 250.
Up to $250,000.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right.
Sometimes the permit value fluctuates, so we don't like to give a number at this time.
Right, understand.
And Eleanor, it doesn't have to be on the site either, correct?
No, he hasn't mentioned he's installing art, so that would be a full payment into the public art fund.
Oh, just be in the fund, okay.
Okay. That's fine, we can move on from that. Last question. Are we allowed to approve it just for the 10 townhomes and not the variance request?
To be clear, the variance is for the length of the building, it's not for the two townhomes. That's just a flex unit.
Isn't it for, okay, the flex units, I'm sorry. Well, the flex units.
Right, that is a request, an additional request and not by right. The by right is 10 units.
Correct. Are we, are we allowed to approve for what the zoning allows at 10 and still approve the project at 10 and not allow the flex units if we decide as a commission?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I just want, I want us to know all of our.
To be clear, you could, I would recommend having something on the record to support that, so should there be an appeal, we can justify our actions.
It's an appeal for something that's by code if we do something by code? If we're, if we're approving by code? Okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure we have all of our options. I wouldn't want to deny the entire project because by right, they can build, but up to 10 is what I would want to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Vice Mayor Llewellyn? You want Commissioner, Commissioner Davis? Commissioner Davis?
That was my question in my agenda review. So basically, I wanted to know and it was answered, so we can approve the variance without the approval of the flex units. I just, you know, we always, I just want to clarify that legally, if we, you know, if something is zoned or for a specific area and we don't allow it to go forward, can we be sued for not allowing that particular zone project to go forward? That's, I mean, that, those are the, I need to have clarification on that.
I can answer that. I mean, the, the simple answer is this. If you are, well, anybody can always sue, whether it's a resident unhappy with the decision or the applicant unhappy with your decision. Either way, we can be sued for, it's called a sursuriary petition. Sursuriary petition is basically an appeal of the decision. It's whether due process was provided, which is why we have all the questions about ex parte communications because your decision should be made in this room. So if there have been these outside communications, that's why we want the disclosures so that the reasoning, the basis for your decision is made here and it's fully disclosed during the public hearing. It's why I asked for the name of the people, et cetera. So it's due process, whether you followed the correct law and whether there's competent substantial evidence in the record to support the decision. Following the correct law means that staff used the correct law, the, the application was reviewed for the correct law and that you, is the decision makers, apply the correct law. So if the staff and the staff report of your planners is considered competent substantial evidence, says that they recommend approval and you're saying no to something, you need to have a basis in the, in the record for why you would say no. So that's where the competent substantial evidence comes in. And that's, the reason I ask for that is because that is how I defend you and the decision-making. Is there competent substantial evidence in the record to just support your decision to say yes or no to an application? Have I answered the question?
Yes, thank you. I mean, no, that's, that's what I really wanted to know and so my feeling is that I would approve the variance based on staff recommendations without the two flex units.
But do we need to give justification if we say that? Because that's the same, okay, well, I'll start. I'll, I'll approve staff's recommendation without the two flex units as well. And, and my justification is that I've been consistent with that, understanding and knowing that we are in a, a time of a lot of development. And for me, I have been very consistent on not allowing variances that improve the, the density that is going around in our city holistically. That, that's been how I've been voting. And, and also, I want to honor the residents that come out and they speak about things that are in, directly in their backyard and in their communities. And so while I will always go with what the code allows, I don't want to be backed into a corner of having to approve additional things that are outside of our code if I think that it could be better uses on the property for additional drainage or recreation or green space, which is another thing that is desperately needed in our city is additional green space. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner James.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that if the two flex units are not approved tonight and we drop the project down to 10 units, it will affect the variance that they're requesting. The variance is for the linear distance of the building. The code allows 150 feet. They're asking for 216. Each unit is 36 feet. The project is double stacked, so if we drop two units, they will then need 180-foot linear distance, which is still a variance because the code is at 150. So it's a lesser variance, but they'll still need that variance.
I also want to make sure.
Thank you for that clarification.
I know that it's important to you all, as it was to the residents, that if you all don't approve the two additional, what's going to happen to the bylaws that were going to be included that did not allow for the short-term rentals, which is a big, big, big concern in our city. I didn't want you all to forget that.
Thank you. All right, Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Okay. Please be patient with me here. I have a lot of thoughts and I want to get them all out. Number one, I will say, Jeanette, you are correct. I did not hear you speaking with the developers, but I did hear the majority of people who were at that meeting speaking with the developers. I also spoke with them myself and I had my own concerns that I also voiced with them while people were there and afterwards as well, after everybody left. My recollection is that the primary concern that everybody had and that I had at the time was that this was going to be a three-story building and there was nothing in that area that was like that. When the developers then explained that this actually was only the height of a two-story building, there was a lot of relief from the residents who were there. And then people stepped back a minute and looked at it and really took the time and stopped attacking because there was some attacking in the beginning. And they listened and they asked questions and got answers to their questions. The issue with regard to the two additional units was always part of this variance. This is not something new and it was discussed at that meeting. And I remember specifically because a couple of people were saying, you have a right to 10 units? They were surprised because of the project down the street, which was the nine townhomes and there were only nine, not 10, and it's about the same size piece of property. And there was a question about that. And the, the, once they understood that there was a right to 10 units, then there was a discussion about there being an additional two units and that was part of the reason why the, the building itself was going to be longer. I will also tell you that I do recall that some of the comments being from people in, that live in the area, very vocal people in the area, that one, they were very relieved that this was really only two stories, even though it's technically three. They were pleased with the aesthetic appearance of the project because they felt that it was going to bring up the neighborhood. That neighborhood is, that particular street, not the neighborhood itself, but that particular street has a bunch of triplexes and duplexes that are very rundown, have some undesirable people living in them in some cases, have had issues with the police and crime. And I know that the majority of people who were at that particular meeting were very positive about this, feeling like this was something that was going to be positive for the neighborhood for a change because the West has been ignored. It's been ignored for a long time. Then the flood happened. And, I mean, I felt very good about that meeting when I left. I really felt very good about it. In fact, I think I even contacted somebody in the city afterwards. I know Claudia was there, but I did speak to some other people in the city about it and I. was there, but I, I did speak to some other people in the city about it, and I said, you know, I, I, I think it, I think it went well, I think everybody, for the most part, felt pretty good about this. And then the flood happened. And that road was flooded, it was flooded for several days, the field was closed for several days because their parking lot was flooded. And I had a conversation with the city manager about this, about that road needing to be one of our projects that we need to make a priority, because of the fact that not only do you have homes there that were being flooded, and roads that were impassable, you also have a business that could not operate for several days, which meant there were people that couldn't work, businesses couldn't run, it affects everything. And that was something that we also did discuss, correct? Yes. I will tell you that I know, we all feel that whatever's happening in our neighborhood is the most important thing in the world, and it is to us. There were other neighbors of yours, like the Estates of Fort Lauderdale, which had knee-high and waist-high water in some areas, they could not pass through with any sort of vehicle at all for days and days and days, and they literally could not get groceries. They couldn't, and, and I even had talked about possibly, could we get them some groceries? And I was told, you do not want to bring a vehicle in there because it's going to push the water into the homes and make things worse. And there literally was no place for the water to go over there for days. And that's a project that, Leslie, just to address your, your concerns, we did discuss, that's a project that's going to be coming forward, it's just going to take a little time, because it's a really big, big project. And each of these projects has different, they have different sizes, different things that they need to go through, different phases, and it does take time. This particular project was a very positive project, I thought, for this neighborhood. Any project that we have now, any development project that comes in, we require the highest engineering standards of every developer. They have to retain their own water. No, it's not going to make the flooding go, go away, it's not, flooding's going to happen no matter what, but it will at least help a little bit, it may help a little bit. So some of that water maybe won't be as bad. Are we expecting another thousand-year storm? No. Do we think it might happen in less than a thousand years? Sure. There could be another hundred-year storm, we've had a few of those in less than a hundred years. But we can't just stop building things and stop doing things simply because we had a storm and there was flooding, it, it just, that's not, if you could give me something that would make sense, if you could, and I've, and I had this conversation with somebody earlier today, if you could propose to me something that would make sense to put there, that's going to ma, improve that neighborhood, it's going to improve that street, and is not going to harm other parties at the same time, because you have people that have spent money for this property as well. I'm happy to listen to it. I can't seem to get that answer from anybody, and I've asked three people to give me that answer. One person agreed with me, and said, "You're right, there isn't anything else." This is a really nice project, it really is. No, 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 public hearings closed, okay?
We don't disagree with that.
Right.
So you're going off totally in the wrong.
Nope.
You want the upgrade.
Okay. We want the up, okay, but the two extra units, it, it change, it ends up changing things and we have to go back and we have to look at other things again and start this whole process over again. This becomes not only a, a, a time issue, it becomes a money issue, it becomes more of an opportunity for other things to happen that we don't need to happen right now. There's no rush on this, it's going to take them time, they're not going to be able to get this approved tomorrow, even if we approve it here today, there are still phases that they have to go through to complete the whole process. It's not going to get built tomorrow, okay? Look at the nine townhomes, they haven't done anything with it, right? Nothing's even happened there, okay? I hate to see a development like this go away or have to be delayed further because you only want the ten units. The twelve units, the two extra units aren't going to make that much of a difference, quite frankly, it's, 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 that's not really what the issue is here. I just think that we need to take a step back, not have a knee-jerk reaction to what happened with this flood, and suddenly make that the reason why we suddenly want to have this moratorium, moratorium on development again, which has been brought up before, and we were told we couldn't do that. So I think we just need to look at this logically and try to see the positives with it, and there are a lot of positives with this project. That's the whole reason why they came out and spoke to you, was to talk to you about it, they weren't hiding the ball, they weren't hiding anything from you. People specifically asked about this, I heard the discussions about the additional two units. So I did not, I'm not making that up, I'm not lying about it, I heard people talking about the two specific additional units. It was discussed. With that, I don't have anything else to add, I just, I, I'm sorry that everybody went through what they went through, I appreciate the hard work that our team, the efforts that everybody made to try to get to people as quickly as they could, and they did get to people as quickly as they could. But the bottom line is, is this was a lot of water in a short period of time, it's going to happen again, it's unfortunately a part of living in South Florida because we are so close to, to the sea level, and, you know, I just, I wish there was a way that we could make everybody happy, and that's just not going to happen. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Okay, um, look, I am, I'm against overdevelopment, but I am for progress, I'm not against progress. And when this first came up at our meeting to approve the variance, we wanted the public to know, you know, we wanted the developer to reintroduce the item to the public, we had a meeting on it, Vice Mayor Lawland was there, and, you know, looking at the project and looking into it, it, it does look like a positive project, it's not, you know, these fifteen-story units that have been getting approved, it's, 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 uh, this is a two-story, like you said, the height of two stories, and it's, it's modern-looking, it's, it's clean, it's fresh, and it's, it's going to be bright, and it, I think it'll enhance the neighborhood. Uh, you know, and, and that, that neighborhood is zoned for it, it's zoned for multifamily. So, yeah, you know, I, I think a lot has been spoken on this, and I appreciate the public for coming out, I appreciate my commissioner's comments, and, you know, we all care about our city, that's one thing we all do, we all care about our city, and, like I said, this, uh, this flood certainly had an impact on our community, and it's going to have a long-term impact on our community, but it's not the end of our community, you know, i, i, if anything, i, it brought up more opportunity for us to correct the issues that we have been ignoring for a while. So, yeah, that's all I have to really say about this item, but Commissioner James, you said you wanted to add?
Um, no, I'm, I'm just going to make a motion.
Okay.
Whenever you all are finished.
Make a motion, do I have a second?
No way.
Make a motion.
No, I just, yeah, I'm, I'm going to tell you, I just wanted to make sure the discussion was complete with everyone. You finished with your discussion? Okay. I, I, I would like to make a motion to approve nine, nine point five, sorry, with the ten units and amend the variance a hundred and eighty feet.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a second from Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
Call a roll.
I mean, yeah, let's call a roll. Okay, so let's be clear what we're voting on, is, this is not the variance or the variance. So it's the, it's the variance for, for twelve units, or it's the?
To be clear, there's no variance on units, it's flex units, which means, they, there's a pool that they're entitled to ask for a couple of units on, there's no variance there. The variance is for the length of the building, because if you move to reduce the number of units from twelve to ten, you're reducing that line of the building. So the re, the, the variance would be to be reduced to a hundred and eighty feet.
Eighty, right?
One hundred and eighty.
One eight zero, okay.
Is it one hundred and eighty, Eleanor?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor? Okay, my motion again is to approve item nine point five with the ten units without the two flex, and amend the variance to approve it for a hundred and eighty feet, so it reflects the length of ten units versus twelve that was given by staff, that's, that's the motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Davis.
Before you vote, I'm sorry, just, did you want to hear from the applicant at all? The only reason they asked, he hasn't, he hasn't spoken.
He doesn't understand.
I'm so sorry.
State your name and address, sir?
Yes, Gustavo Bolado, 346 Conservation Drive, Weston, Florida, 33327. Yes, I think something is confused. The, by right, we can make ten units in the line, we request one variance is for the length of the building with the twelve units for twelve townhouses, including the two flex, request extra units. If the, we, you, the motion is to approve the ten units, the project changed totally, okay? Because I can cut the, the building and move two units to the backs, in, in fact, I spoke with the, the Community Development Office, and I need to make another DRC, because it's a change on the project, more extra time, more money, or whatever, that's another, another point, but it's a lot of project with the flex units approved. If I remove two units for the project, maybe to compensate the, the developer idea on the, on the, on that project, maybe I need to go in, no two eighteen-hundred square foot townhouse, maybe twenty-one or twenty-two thousand per unit, is the same size in a square footage, I, I can use the same floor, for a floor plate, because all the street around is complying with the fire requirements, with the drainage, in fact, I make a, I, I sent to put the healing sign on the property, the sending of the, the storm. But I need to send to the staff the picture, when I send the picture with the sign, I ask my people, "What do you do? You swim to the fence, or you take a boat, because the water is like this?" The same day, I spoke with my civil engineer, he respect all the standards for Broward County Engineer Department, we're so close with all the city engineer department, and we put the maximum, we have a over six hundred linear feet of filtration trench, and we make the calculations, and we duplicate the capacity with the existing conditions. I can send this to show, but we may, because I'm, I'm worried when I see the picture, what's happened here, or maybe when the project is done, because in this moment, the land green, we say perious, okay? The, the land absorbed, the, the rain, the rainwater, whatever, no, the water table is two feet below the ground. All our underground works to, to storage, the rain, the rainwater is huge, it's enormous for that, this is a benefit for the area, make this kind of development, it's no, if you reduce, reduce the green area, you have more possibilities to, no, no, you need to make an infrastructure, okay? And that's the, the other point. But again, I accept your decision, in fact, we need for, for the, our development, the new, the, the extra two flex units, but, okay, I'm here to try to defeat my, my project, I think it's a great inversion for this area. You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the?
Roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
No.
Vice Mayor Lawland?
No.
Mayor Ryan?
No.
And the motion fails.
So we now make a motion?
So the motion fails.
You should make a motion.
You can make a motion.
Okay, why make a motion, we passed the, or the nine point, was it nine point five? You have a second?
Is there a second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion passes, Alora, could we please have a, I mean, Alora, could we please have a roll?
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Commissioner James?
No.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lawland?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Okay, motion carried, three to two.
I thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Pleasant evening. Okay, item nine point two, if you would, please.
An ordinance relating to updating certain provisions of Chapter twenty-eight Land Development Code by amending Section 105-90 Outdoor Storage Containers to update the list of restrictions and allowances related to when and where temporary portable containers are permitted, amending Section 110-200 Outdoor Restaurant Seating, amending the distance separation for outdoor seating within the boundaries of the community CRA. Three, amending Section 110-320 Mobile Food Vendor Conditions of Use to update food truck regulations to be consistent with Section 110-20, amending Section 115-50 Conditions of Use to be consistent with the above edits to mo, mobile food vending use, amending Section 220-65 Rooftop Photovoltaic Solar System GoSolar Broward Rooftop Solar Challenge permitting process to remove the reference to GoSolar. Six, amending Section 265-40 Interpretation of Off-Street Parking Requirements to Allow Private Carriages to Be Counted Towards Regional Parking, amending Section 265-91 Parking Reduction for Transportation Demand Management Strategy Implementation Within the CRA Form-Based Districts Relating to Ability to Apply to Earn a 3% Parking Reduction Per Strategy. Amending Section 302-10 Permitted Special Exception and Prohibited Use to be consistent with Section 110-20 of the Land Development Code. Amending Section 635-20 Applicability for Additional Requirements Related to Small-Scale Site Plans, amending Section 710-20 Definitions in Terms of Usage to Modify Definitions to be Consistent with Chapter 12. And amending Section 811-70 Entitled Building Permits to Correct Community Development Name Providing for Codification, Conflict Severability, and an Effective Date, this is second reading.
Good evening, Corinne LaJoy, Assistant Director, Community Development, this is second reading of the text amendment, I made a presentation at first, I can do so again tonight if you like, there are several different provisions that are being changed, you know, I walked through them all, they're in their stack.
You, you don't have to do another presentation, Corinne, unless the commissioner, the commission would like it, no?
And, I'm available for questions.
Yeah, no, we understand, ba, basically for public record, this makes our, our order, our more, our, our ordinances more modern, you know, some of them are a little antiquated, and this brings us more up to speed to accommodate our city, our residents, and our businesses.
Yes, sir.
Yes, perfect.
Thank you.
This is a, this is a public hearing, anybody wish to speak for or against this item? I have a motion from Commissioner Salvino to pass the item, and I have a second from Commissioner James.
Call a roll.
Please call a roll, Alora.
Commissioner Davis?
She's not here.
Okay, Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lawland?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
All right, wonderful.
Would you like me to read nine point three?
Please.
An ordinance relating to updating certain provisions of Chapter twenty-seven Water and Sewer at Article Five Stormwater Regulations at Section twenty-seven dash two-two-seven Stormwater Management Plan Requirements to provide for citywide interim design standards for all construction approved after the date of adoption of this ordinance, providing for codification, conflict severability, and effective date. This is first reading for Community Development.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission. You're probably wondering why I'm talking about stormwater. We've been working with our team of experts, consultants. We have Alec Bagnoff, Lee Kerr, and Peter Moore, who is the Moore of Chenmore and Associates. So we've got top-quality people on our team advising us. And actually, as we were preparing for this presentation this morning, we had a discussion as they were analyzing the data related to the rainfall event two weeks ago. And Dana Beach did get a record amount of rain. It was 18 to 26 inches in a six-hour period, which is a state record for flooding. And I just wanted to make you guys aware of that issue. So as we continue to develop and grow in the city, it's our job to ensure that development is managing their stormwater runoff. And in fact, now, since this rain event and future rain-water conditions, they need to manage more water on their site. And it's apparent for that. So I'll go briefly into the background. All right, so last year, the city submitted a future land use plan amendment to Broward County for the replenishment of our residential units in the Regional Activity Center. The city has received specific comments and recommendations from the county, specifically the Resilient and Environmental Department. And we've had several meetings over the past few months with our consultants, our team, Public Services, and Dr. Geraldo, who is the Environmental and Resiliency Director at Broward County. And based on those meetings, we are recommending a policy change that would improve the overall resiliency of the city. You've already adopted the Resolution 7.4, which was on consent. This ordinance goes hand-in-hand with that and describes some of the details of the interim design standards that we're proposing for these new development projects. I'm going to discuss briefly some of the county's resiliency initiatives. In 2019, the South Florida Regional Climate Compact provided projections of sea level rise into 2070. Their projections provide an increase of 3.3 feet of sea level rise. They've also created future conditions 100-year flood map for development and construction purposes. The county has also created future conditions groundwater elevation map to incorporate that 3.3-foot of sea level rise. They've also adopted regional resiliency standards for seawalls, which the city has adopted recently in 2021 to be consistent with their standards. The county has also created a priority planning areas, which is a map of high-risk areas for sea level rise inundation. And they're currently working on a county-wide risk assessment and resiliency plan. Now, why do I tell you all of those resiliency efforts that the county is doing? Because they're great information that the city can utilize for our development projects. This is a graph showing the 50-year planning horizon of the South Florida Climate Change Compact, showing how they got to the three-foot, 3.3 feet sea level rise. This is a map of the county's priority planning areas. It's limited to coastal communities. And it's important to note that all land use plan amendments are required for review of resiliency if they're located in this area. So this is a blow-up of Dana Beach, specifically showing the Regional Activity Center boundaries. However, these standards, stormwater standards that we're proposing would be citywide, not just related to the rack.
Commissioner James?
Yes, I'm sorry. With this map, only the yellow is the Regional Activity Center? Or is the, okay, so not much of the rack with the flooding?
The purple is considered priority planning areas from the county.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, so the resolution that you adopted in the consent agenda recognizes a few things, everything that I discussed, but the county's initiative. So it recognizes the 2019 sea level rise initiatives from the Climate Compact, the 2073, three-foot sea level rise. It also recognizes the county's priority planning areas, the map I showed you. It agrees to include those above projections in the ongoing stormwater master plan that is currently being worked on by our consultant. And Chenmore is here. He could give, I'm sorry, Chenmore. Peter Moore from Chenmore is here and could give an update on the stormwater master plan as a status project if, if needed. They're expected to be complete by the end of 2024. It also notes the desire to amend the comprehensive plan update to include the peril of flood amendment. It also adopts a citywide interim design standard, and that's what this ordinance is. It's a designs, interim design standard in lieu of the stormwater master plan being adopted for new construction projects. And it's in accordance with our existing stormwater regulations. That's important to know. We currently have stormwater regulations. We're just requesting to enhance them interminally while we work on the stormwater master plan. And then finally, the resolution that was adopted confirms that we will, once the stormwater master plan is final and adopted, we will update our design standards to reflect the data from the stormwater master plan, the watershed planning initiatives, and all the other stormwater data we're collecting from now until 2024. So the ordinance really is the policy change. I'll briefly discuss the existing code requirements that's in the code currently for our stormwater regulations. It says that stormwater, our stormwater regulations apply to all projects that add a pervious area or modify any pervious area. So any addition, any new construction, any expansion to a building or driveway or any type of expansion to impervious area would require stormwater regulations. And that's current in our code now. So I'm going to get a little technical. I'm going to read what the code says. So the site currently, as the code reads, is required to retain the first inch of rainfall on-site and post-development runoff shall not exceed pre-development runoff rate for a 25-year storm event, up to and including an event with a 24-hour duration. So what we're recommending for our interim design standards is to use the most recent county data. All that good initiatives that they've spent money and gathered information, we need to tap into those resources right now. And so we're requesting that developers use this county data to calculate the pre- and post-development stormwater calculation to include future flood risks. So it's important to note that we are not changing the process. We are not changing how we implement the process. All we're doing is raising the bar for our engineering standards for development. And with that, the department is requesting approval. And I'm here for any questions. We have our subject matter experts here as well. If you have any questions of them.
Eleanor, you said this is based off of the recent rain event? With the data from the county?
No, that's what, what I was saying was the rain event, the data was the 26 inches, which was the record for the state.
Okay, okay. So I know you've been working on this, I think, two months?
Quite longer than that. For a long time. We started the application last year. So we started really diving into the resiliency efforts in my department. I know Public Services has been working for a long time with their stormwater master plan and initiatives. So it's kind of a group effort, and we kind of coordinate together. We got the engineers, we got the planners and the consultants, and we're all working together.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I may, because I'd like to put it on the record, not just the outstanding job that is having in community development, but what's happening in Public Services? Because the city did not have a stormwater master plan, just like the city didn't have a parks master plan. You know, just like the city didn't have a strategic master plan. So this, this administration and this team is getting things done. And, and that stormwater master plan that will be complete by next year, and, and this team, what they're working on in regards to resiliency and, and raising the bar like it's never been raised in this city for the benefit of our residents, the ones that are living here now and the ones that are moving in in the future. And I just wanted to make sure that that went on the record because we're catching up on the things that should have been done, but did not occur here in your city, Mayor and Commission. Thank you, Eleanor.
Thank you, Manager. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Okay, public hearing is closed. Vice Mayor Lawellin?
Second.
You second. Commissioner Salvino made a motion to approve. Vice Mayor Lawellin seconded. Alora, could I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James is absent. Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lawellin?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, once again, thank you for all your work on this.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Great job.
Let's just reflect that Commissioner James also voted yes. Would you like me to read the last ordinance, 9.4?
Please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 6 of the city's code of ordinances, beaches, parkway, parks, waterways, and recreation. To amend the title as follows. Beaches, parks, waterways, recreation, and parking. Amending Article 2 Beach Parking to Parking and amending Sections 6-32 Method of Imposing Charges and 6-33 Schedule of Charges to amend parking permit fees applicable to the city garage parking area. Amending Chapter 25 of the city's code, Traffic, Article 3 Entitled Parking, Stopping, and Standing, Division 3 Parking Meters to Reference Parking Meter Control Technology, Providing for Severability, Codification, and an Effective Date. This is a community development item.
Thank you. Okay, despite that long title, we're really just amending the use of the parking garage. And it was brought to the commission at the last, I think it was the last commission meeting or?
It was like two or three.
Two, two before. To open up the public, the city hall parking garage for the public use. I have a very brief presentation. Oops. Can you go back? There we go. Stop touching. Okay. So the parking garage was built in 2011, and the purpose was for city hall patrons and library patrons. There's a total of 440 total parking spaces in the garage. And as you can tell, because you used the garage tonight, it is very underutilized. So this text amendment will allow the public to utilize the city hall parking garage from the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. free of charge. The parking garage will continue to be monitored by the Beach Ranger staff and city hall security. And the city hall parking rules will be enforced. As you can see, there's a sample of, of the new signage that we're proposing. It includes the no overnight parking, no oversight vehicles, no trailers, and no parking in marked spots. As you know, we have some marked spots for the Hotel Della, who has, who pays for those spots. So it's indicating that they should not park on those spots. And the hotel management is advised to let their patrons know that they are to park in the parked spots as well. And that's really it. Staff is recommending approval of this item in first reading. If you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Eleanor. Do I have a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh, sorry, yes. This is, this is a public.
This is no public hearing on the first reading.
It's a first reading.
It's not a land development code.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I have a motion from Commissioner Salvino.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Lawellin.
I have a question.
Before we vote, can Commissioner James please state your question?
Yes, these, we're going to be, patrons are going to be paying for parking, correct?
No, it'll be free.
No?
Free parking.
Free.
Free parking.
Okay.
That's it. Yes, 7 to 11 p.m.
From BSO or from code?
Okay, Laura, please call roll.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Salvino?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lawellin?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Good job, Eleanor.
All right, that's it for our public hearings. Now on to discussion impossible action. We will start with item 10.1, On-Site Public Art Installation at Elevate Apartments. This is a community development item.
Good evening. We do have a presentation for this item. Thank you. This is a public art installation presentation for the Elevate Project at 600 East Dana Beach Boulevard. The project is, has an approved site plan, which is currently under construction. And this is. Okay. Okay, got it. Okay, so as I said, there's a current site plan that was approved in 2015. It was modified in 2019, and it is currently under construction on East Dana Beach Boulevard. The developer is choosing to install public art on-site. So this is one of those cases where half the amount of the public art fee is contributed to the city's fund. The other half is used for installation of public art on-site. The art piece is created by Miami-based artist Alberto Cavallieri. The public art piece, the, this artist has created other public art pieces that can be seen around in our area in Doral, in Miami Shores, as well as Venezuela, and, and in Chicago as well. The proposed sculpture will be constructed using sheets of metal welded together in the form of a knot shape, which symbolizes connection between family, friends, and community. The maintenance and conservation of the proposed sculpture will be provided by the developer. And this is a rendering of what the, the art piece will look like. On March 20th, the Public Art Advisory Board recommended to the city commission approval of the art piece with a vote of six to zero. And at this time, staff's recommending that the city commission approve this public art installation at the Elevate Project. And I know that representatives from the applicant is here as well. If you have any questions for them.
Thank you.
Yeah, and with the approval of this public art, we would also be requesting the reimbursement of their escrow that was deposited at that time, so we can reimburse the developer at this time. This is actually, just for your reference, I think this is our third on-site public art installation in the city now with this development.
Commissioner James?
I make a motion to approve item 10.1.
Okay, motion from Commissioner James. I have a second from Commissioner Salvino. Laura, can you please call? Actually, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, okay. None opposed. Item 10.1 passes. Hi, how you doing, sir?
Hi, how are you? Actually, I'm not the artist. I work for the developer. I was here to, to see the decision. And thank you all for approving this. This is something good for the community. This is going to be appreciated, not only for the residents, but for all the, all the, not the residents of the building, but all the residents of city of Dana Beach. So I think it's something positive, something that is better for the city and, and for the culture and for the historical of all the city.
Thank you, sir. So you're a sculptor?
All right.
Oh, you work for the developer?
Yeah, I work for the developer, yes.
Oh, okay, he's not the artist. Oh, okay, all right. No problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
You know, Commissioners, we should start, we should have a couple like undergrad art classes just to get a little up to speed. You know, we've been approving so much art. You know, I, I'm not saying we have bad taste, but it would definitely help. Okay, yeah, that's why we leave a lot to our staff and our art advisory board. All right, so we'll move on to item 10.2, our Visit Lauderdale proposal, which is sponsored by our Commissioner Joyce Davis.
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to reintroduce Kamala Clark to you guys. We did have her presentation during the Visit Lauderdale workshop when we were looking into the advertising as well. I want to say we had a tremendous tour of the city of Dana Beach. We visited Grandpa's and Jackson's and the casino and Dana Point. And it was, we all learned something new. So it's always different when you're able to see something up close in person and give them a closer look at why we love Dana Beach. So without further ado, Kamala, you are on.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and fellow Commissioners and city staff. We did learn a lot on our tour. And it really enlightened us and provided us with a better perspective on how we can help promote this destination. As we noted, I'm the Vice, Senior Vice President of Marketing and Communications for Visit Lauderdale. And we are charged with promoting the entirety of Broward County. Dana Beach is a very important part of that. And we want to help you showcase that. So we charged our agency, Aqua, to, and I can't get it to move forward. Help me out, please. We charged our agency, after our initial workshop discussion, We charged our agency after our initial workshop discussion to come up with a proposed budget out of our existing media buy to present you all, so that we can help amplify your messaging. So we took, we charged them with the $50,000, and they presented us with what we viewed as a really solid program. It incorporates everything from print to broadcast to, I'm sorry, print and outdoor activations. The first segment of that is the clear water, clear channel portion. I'm sorry, I'm exhausted at this point. Clear channel outdoor segment, which is 11 rotary outdoor billboards, and they would be featured along, throughout Florida, through Palm Beach, Miami, Orlando, and Tampa. And they would feature Dana Beach alongside Visit Lauderdale campaign. Now, as I may have shared in the previous meeting, Visit Lauderdale just went through a full rebranding campaign and have invested a significant amount of money in our consumer campaigns. So this would go alongside that marketing and would definitely amplify what you're doing. Through the clear channel outdoor program, you would reach approximately 2.1 million views through June and August. So that's just one of the pieces. The premium on streaming video, in 2023, we tapped into this new platform, which is really an OTT streaming video advertising, and it will allow you all to provide a 15-second ad that would run alongside the Visit Lauderdale ad as well. These ads would be displayed to consumers residing in key markets in Miami, Palm Beach, Orlando, and Tampa. The advertising target would be women 25 to 54 with household income of $125,000, and this would reach approximately 350,000 impressions between June and August as well. Our New York Times proposal is very similar. Again, all of these utilizing your 15-minute advertisement, 15-second advertisement, which would run alongside the Visit Lauderdale advertisement. I know if you're familiar with the New York Times ads, it's that annoying ad that never goes away when you're trying to scroll through, when you're like, get out of my way, but it's very effective, because it won't get out of your way. So this will allow you to show a 15-second advertisement to travel and tenders with household income of $125,000 in New York, Chicago, Boston, Baltimore, Philadelphia, Atlanta, Dallas, and Houston. And this particular program would reach over 477,000 impressions. And then we tapped into Afar Magazine. We went to print, which is something that's very effective. Afar Magazine is one of the leading cruise magazines in the country, and we have decided to do a supplement. So we're doing a 12-page supplement, but we're offering you all a one-page advertisement within that supplement, which would allow you to reach their 200, and they distribute 275,000 copies, and you would then reach their 1.1 million consumers. So again, another opportunity. In addition to the print copies, we get overprints for this publication and distribute them at trade shows and events around the globe. So you get, you know, a little extra buying for your buck through this program. So in summary, we've put together a program that really highlights both outdoor streaming, video, print, and digital elements. It will deliver over 3.2 million impressions between June and September, and it will cost you just $50,000. But it's a great, I mean, I'm telling you, we had them dig really deep and find programs that have been extremely successful for us as a destination, and we think it would just really help amplify your message. So open for questions.
Vice Mayor Lawellin?
Yes, welcome back.
Hi.
Good to see you. So my biggest question is this. You're talking about these billboards and different things where you're including Dana Beach with Visit Lauderdale's campaign. So I'm trying to visualize this, as far as, is it like, half of the ad is something that you all have already planned, and half of it's us, or are we just like a little piece in the whole thing?
No.
Or how does it work?
It would be half and half. So because it's video segments, it would show our 15-second ad, and then it would show a 15-second ad of yours. So we're essentially giving you half of our media buy. That will allow you to, and we would also, I've also spoken with our agency, who is open to help develop the 15-second ad if you all don't have something that already exists. We haven't done this with any other municipality.
That's what I was gonna ask.
We opened it up. It's available on our website. We've opened up one, because we know that this is something that you're interested in doing. You would be the first ones to take advantage of it. We will open it up during our next media season, but we thought this was a good opportunity, given where you all are, were in terms of trying to tell your story and amplify your message, to be able to tap into the media buys that we've already invested in.
So here comes my next question. So if we're the first one, and this is going to be through the summer, let's suppose it's effective, but we want to do it more when we're in season. Are we going to be placed at the end of the list because we already went? Or if other cities are interested? I'm just trying to get an idea of.
No, not at all.
How we would rank with that.
So you would be, you're top of the list. So you would be the first person we would come to, again, because of the fact that, you know, we've already have this established relationship. Again, we do represent the entirety of Broward County, so we have to open it up to everyone. But, you know, you're already got skin in the game. You know how it works, and I think it would be really effective.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Do we get seniority, since we're the first ones?
I just gave it to you.
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know and put it on the record that we were very impressed with them. Candido did the tour. So I don't know, Candido, if you want to speak on this, but this is, this we thought was and is a very, very good investment with, for our city, working and partnering with our upcoming individual, the next person, or the person that will be the director of communications and, and, and marketing. So they were very, very thorough. The team that they, that they brought was truly, truly remarkable, and Candido and I spent, you know, an hour and a half, yeah, Candido. It's, it's important that they hear, you know, staff, our, our impressions of, of this team.
No, absolutely. Thank you, manager. Candido Sosa Cruz, Deputy City Manager. They brought out the whole team, everyone in charge, from content to social media, to, to everything, the executive director, from top to bottom. And the most impressive part of it was how familiar they are with Dana Beach. This is not just a media company, this is not just a marketing company, but these are individuals that we know, and they know our city, they know the history of our city, from the executive director visiting Jackson's when she was a kid, with her family, with her parents, understanding the story, communicating with the owner, the owner expressing how, what they had to do to make it in the city when they first bought the company. So we're very excited, because no other company, regardless of how big or small, could provide what, what this organization could provide, and they're definitely going to put us up front, and like she, like she mentioned, right there next to them. So we support it 100%, and we believe, believe this is a win-win, and we are excited to bring our communications director, so he or she could also work with them and really elevate the city, marketing the city everywhere, pretty much all around the nation, as, as they mentioned. So absolutely.
Thank you, Deputy Manager. Commissioner James?
Yes, thank you. So I think I missed it. How, how long does this, these ads run, or how long?
The campaign runs June through August, 31st, 30th.
So 90 days?
It's two months.
Oh, too much.
June, July, August, 90 days, you are correct.
Okay, so June 1 through the end of August?
Correct.
Okay. I, I know that you said we get 15 seconds on the billboard, all 11?
Yes.
Okay. And so for the example of the ads for the New York Times, it's similar to what the Vice Mayor asked on those little, like, how, I, I wish I had an example visually to see what it looks like. Is there?
It's in the.
Was it? Did I? Ralph, could you bring us back to it?
But it's essentially the digital banner ad. And then it'll show our video, and it'll show your video. So while someone's reading an article, it'll show your, it'll show our video, and then it'll show your 15-second video.
Okay, I think I'm getting a little confused as to the billboard and then the thing on.
So that's the New York Times. So see how you see the Google ad, essentially? That would be.
Yes.
A video playing that would show your 15-second ad, as well as our 15-second ad.
Does it have to be the same thing that we have already on the billboards?
No, it doesn't. It could be different content.
Okay, okay. And all of these are for, from June to August?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Salvino?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I can tell you this, you know, you might be talking June to August with that, but you start passing out all those magazines and everything else, they don't go away. And that form of advertisement that you put out there, that's going to stay around for months or a year. And so that, that, those dollars right along, just the magazines are well-spent. I just think that this is a phenomenal advertising plan for the perimeter of our city. I have no question that I would like to do this program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Commissioner Davis?
Well, I'm all, obviously a proponent. It is late, and we are ready, but I'm ready to move forward with this. As Candido said, we, they, they really immersed themselves in the city of Dana Beach. My only question, and I would really like to see how we would hammer out the process of working with our PIO and when the communications director gets on board, because my, my biggest desire is that we already have seen your high-quality ad, and if we're going to have your ad, then our ad, then, and we get to use your people to help create that ad. Is that going to be an additional expense to us? And, and we can start working on that once we?
No, we would need to get started almost immediately, as soon as we sign an agreement, so they would get started on working on the ad.
And you feel we have sufficient time?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, they can turn it around.
That was all I had to say. Thank you very much for.
Thank you.
Coming and getting.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Yeah, no, I really enjoyed the presentation. I liked you guys since the get-go. Unfortunately, I couldn't make it for that tour.
You missed a good one.
Oh, yeah, I know. I know. Looks like you guys had a lot of fun. And then that's great, too, because you really got to show your staff what Dana has to offer, and they live right here, and they learned a lot about our city. And, you know, advertising right next to Fort Lauderdale is not a bad thing. It is the city right next to us as well. So you could almost stumble into Dana, you know, when visiting Fort Lauderdale. Exactly. So, yes, this, this is a wonderful project, and, yeah, I want to see if I can entertain a motion to move forward. I have a motion from Commissioner Davis to approve. A second from Vice Mayor Lawellin. Oh, sorry. I have a vote, a motion. Turn me off. I have a motion from Commissioner Davis to approve. I have a second from Vice Mayor Lawellin. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? None opposed. All right. Congratulations. We look forward to our alliance. And our continued relationship. Success, success. All right. Wonderful. Wonderful. All right. That's it for discussion impossible action. We'll move on to commissioner comments, and we will begin with Commissioner Davis.
I'm just going to mention three events, and not all of them that I've had. I've already, we've already talked about Visit Lauderdale. I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to everybody who came out to Earth Day, the entire Earth Day team, the city manager who brought Coca-Cola in for the first time, the deputy city manager who helped lead all of the teams, and you guys did a phenomenal, phenomenal job, and I want to thank you, because this is the best year, this is the most participation we've had so far. In just a couple of hours, we picked up 100 pounds more trash than we did last year. We did 462.5 pounds of trash in just those couple of hours. So when we all come together, I mean, the best thing I love is that it's a feel-good event, and I want to thank Maxine, who just kept, you know, tinging me when I, when I need to get things done. But I also have to give a special shout-out to Public Services, because Rome was not built in a day, but they built that wall in a day, and they put art up there, and they made it spectacular, to the point where the GM wanted to keep it there every day. So you guys are beyond amazing, and, and some of them were working on all cylinders with the pump vet trucks and, and working with Miami Beach, so they never, never, never stopped. And so I, you know, I know there's always going to be complaints, but we have the hardest working team, and I'm always very, very proud to work with this team. So thank you all very, very much for contributing to our successful third Earth Day. And thank my colleagues for coming out, those who were able to, because it really makes a difference when everybody sees us as a cohesive team. Let's see, and the last thing we did was Dan Marino Autism Awareness Family Fun Day with Dana Point. Thank the mayor for doing the proclamation and reading the proclamation. I do think we should be known as an inclusive city, where all who present themselves are welcome. We want to kind of move forward with these different kinds of partnerships, just like we have with Visit Lauderdale, and, and look into some more formalized partnerships with the foundation. So I'm just really proud of the work that we're doing here in the city, and with that, I will close. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner James?
Thank you. I, I first want to, you know, publicly, we all went through a really tough time with the flooding, and, and our Dana Beach response and our team was, was phenomenal, and I'm sure they, they were completely overwhelmed with the amount of calls and text messages and photos and videos from all of our constituents, including us up here. It's not often that we go through this type of an emergent, emergent situation, but I do think it's going to make us stronger for the hurricane season coming up, understanding where some of our, our places are that need to be addressed as soon as possible. And also, another huge shout-out to the commission for addressing immediately newer concerns in new areas that were greatly impacted by the flood. So it was, I'm sure everyone, from Public Services to Parks and Recreation to Community Development to Code, everyone had a hand in making sure that we are dry for now, because it's raining outside, so I'm not sure if we're flooded by the time we get out here. But making sure that we're doing everything we can for our residents, including our, our police and fire, who, who made sure that we stayed safe through some scary times. And I, I did enjoy the Art and Seafood Festival that we had in our city, and it was, I didn't think it was going to be well-attended, but it ended up being very well-attended, and, and people had a great time. And lastly, I had the opportunity to join Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz at her annual Game Change Award Ceremony, where she invites around 50 athletes in, in her district for game-changing award ceremony, and so I was a featured speaker, and so just grateful to continue to represent our city in, in different aspects, aspects, sorry. Thank you.
Sure, sure.
One thing, one more thing. I, I do want to say, Candido and I were able to tour the Dan Marino Foundation, and they gave us a flag for Autism Awareness Month, and it says, "Accept Without Limits," and I think that that is a great message for us to send out to our residents. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Thank you, Commissioner James. Commissioner Salvino?
Yeah, I got something to say.
Yeah? You have alter ego today?
You're a riot. You guys are keeping me busy. I've, I've been trying to follow all the commissioners around, YouTube mayor. Saratoga Apartments opened a new building up that was one of our new affordable housing units that we've been waiting for, which is, which was nice, that was a beautiful building. Oh, Lord. Today I went out, I was with the Reach kids from Olson, Awesome Olson Middle School. They had lunch at the Quarter Deck, and they took a tour with Parks and Recreation Director, Eric Davis. Thank you, Eric. I went to Dan Marino Foundation and received a lot of information on the autism, and, you know, Commissioner Davis and who else? I don't remember who you went with, the mayor? I'm talking about to the foundation, but I want to thank you guys for going there, but it was a great event they had at Dana Point. Dana Point always steps up, I'll tell you. They do a great job for what they do down there. They, they, they give Dana Beach, yeah, a star. I'll tell you, they do everything right over there. I'm so proud of Kim Ko and Dana Point, Brad and Emily O'Neal, they're doing such a great job. You know, I, uh, the, the last thing I wanna say, and I'm not gonna elaborate on it, is I do wanna reiterate how hard our city worked with the slut, this flood we had. And just for the residents that may still be listening, uh, we are working on hard and, and we're, there's gonna be a lot coming out, a lot of, uh, words that the city manager will bring out to you and the mayor as regards to what we're doing and what we're gonna try to do to rectify this problem. But just keep in mind, it's not gonna change in six weeks or six months. It's gonna take a while. But we are gonna go after it and we're gonna, and we're gonna win. And sooner or later, uh, the floods, unless we have another catastrophic storm like that, our floods will be controlled. But it's gonna take time. We just gotta keep going forward. And as some of the commissioners said, we need to see some end results. So let's just keep working at it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salvino. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll just sum it up really quickly. I went to a lot of stuff in the last month. Um, I'm not gonna go into the details. A lot of things were already mentioned. Um, the only thing that I really wanna say tonight is thank you, thank you, thank you to our tremendous city staff, BSO, fire and police. Um, thank you to the city of Miami Beach and to Broward County and FWC and everybody else who helped to remove the water and help our residents. It was a wonderful, wonderful team effort on the part of everybody. Every department helped, every employee 24/7, over the weekends. Um, everybody being available and all hands on deck. And it was truly something very impressive to see. Um, I know a lot of people felt like they may have been waiting for a long time, but there was a lot to do. A lot of water all over the city and there was, nobody stopped working. Everybody kept working the entire time. And I wanna thank you all for that because you all did a great job. I do wanna say that it's, it's almost, and I hesitate to even say this, but it's almost a good thing that this flood happened because now we know, now we know where all of our weak spots are. Um, we've all been complaining about different neighborhoods and different things that we see. Now we know. And assessments were done throughout the entire city. We can prioritize. We can focus on them and really start working on making them better. Um, so I, I look forward to seeing the outcome of the overall assessment, um, seeing exactly where we need to really focus our efforts and doing what we have to, to make sure that we have the funding for it, to make sure we have the staff for it and to make sure that we get it done as soon as we can. And like the, like Commissioner Salvino said, it's not gonna happen in six weeks, but we have a plan. That's what I like, that at least we have a plan and we're moving forward on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, you know, hearing, hearing what, uh, our fellow commissioners have been doing throughout the month, uh, i- i- it's great. You know, we spread out all throughout the community and you guys are all involved and, you know, I commend you guys for this. You, you've been doing it for a while. You know what you're doing. So, yeah, from the Art and Seafood Festival to, you know, the Great Flood of Dania, is what I like to call it, uh, to, you know, the City of Hollywood, our, our inter-local agreement that we had. You know, even, uh, actually I brought on a cargo ship this, uh, this month. And speaking of that, uh, you know, I was assisted by Port Everglades and helping. And it's Fleet Week this week. And I wanted to bring up this item. Uh, this is for my contingency fund. So Fleet Week is sponsored by the Florida, the American Legion. And, uh, the five ships will be porting in Port Everglades and the sailors and marines are given the opportunity to visit four American Legion posts in Broward County. And, uh, our post 304 was actually one of the posts that was selected. And so the commander over there, Gunny, reached out to Captain Marks and they needed, uh, transportation for the, the marines and the sailors, uh, to come over to, you know, uh, come and socialize at our, uh, local post 304 in Dania. And this has been coordinated, uh, you know, with our, with our, uh, commander, Gunny, and police chief. And, uh, I'm asking, you know, for the shuttle, it's with a family limo and it is $1,009. Uh, and it's to shuttle back and forth, you know, a soldier, active duty soldiers to our post. So, um, I'm, I'm requesting this approval out of my contingency fund. You know, I have consensus? $1,009. Nine? Okay, so I got nine. Commissioner Salvino donate $9 out of his contingency fund and I'll donate 1,000. No, it's okay, it's okay. Go, go ahead, Commissioner Davis.
I'm so sorry. I promised I wouldn't bring this up during, um, our commission comments. You guys know that we're part of the Broward League of Cities. Every year we attend the annual gala. Um, we have been great partners with them throughout, for many years now, and they are asking every city to be a premier sponsor for the gala. And that's up to you. There's two different levels. One is 3,500. The premier level is, uh, 5,000. But this is the only funding that they receive throughout the entire year. So, um, I'm just requesting that, uh, we consider what Mary Lou Ty has asked us to do and see if I can get consensus for us to be a premier sponsor.
Yeah, yeah. Do I have consensus on my $1,009, please? Family, okay. Wonderful. I shouldn't say please. I have consensus. Thank you. That's passed. All right, congratulations to Post 304. Vice Mayor Llewellyn?
I was just gonna ask how much money we have in our commission contingency to address Commissioner Davis's request. Does anybody know?
Our overall?
Our total, yeah. Does he know?
Well, we just spent 50.
You're talking amongst yourselves.
That was from advertising budget.
That's one of our contingencies?
No, that was budgeted.
Oh, okay.
Any idea?
Are we talk, good evening, everyone. Frank DePaul. Are we talking about the commission contingency? Or the individual accounts? We don't have that number right now, but we can get it for you relatively soon. How much was the event that you're asking about?
3,500 or 5,000?
We could definitely cover that in the contingency.
Then I'm okay with the five.
My, my own, 5,000 is what? It's for a full table? 3,500 for five people? Six?
Six. I think it's six.
Yeah, my only reservation about it is, you know, we're having trouble getting, um, people to this dinner that we're going to Saturday night, so.
We have, we have 11 people at that table.
It took like, eh, you know, not from what I was seeing, but yeah, okay. As long as, as long as we're filling it up, that's great. That's great with me. So. Commissioner James?
Yes, no, I think there was a, it was a mistake that we were looking for people and we had forgotten that we had tasked Commissioner Davis to go out and get the people. So we have, we have 11, um, from a oopsie. Um, and so instead of 10, we'll have 11. My question is what come, what comes with it? Just the table or is it logo? Is it extra promotion?
They, they give you an ad, I believe. Yeah, on the screen and then in their program.
That helps fund them.
Yeah.
No, no, no. I wanna, uh, listen, I wanna, I wanna, I support the Broward League. I just wanna know what the sponsorship comes with.
We'll get it to you. All right, I can look now if I can read.
Let me see if you can read. Is there any time with the premier sponsorship that you know that we will be able to speak or be recognized or is it?
We'll definitely be recognized.
You said, no?
We will be recognized.
Always recognized, but they will actually put it up on the screen. They would get the microphone and do a whole ad basically for Dania Beach.
Okay. Okay, and do we submit the ad? Or are they choosing the ad for us?
All right, you ready?
Yes.
Premium reserved table for 10, complimentary valet parking, half-page ad in the event program, prominent screen recognition at the event and on the league website, pre and post social media recognition, signage recognition at the event, verbal recognition at the event, pre and post press release recognition.
Okay, so that, that now sounds like we're getting a lot for our buck, so yes.
We can send him a photo of all you guys as, so they could post it as far on their ad.
Uh, when is the event?
June.
Oh, June. Oh, we could talk about how Dania Beach has turned 120. I mean, it's a lot of possibilities, but I just, it's, it's a half-page ad. I think we really need to make it count and think about it and come up with something creative. We could still, we could do both, you know, in the same thing.
I'll tell you in two seconds. I waited till my eyesight was gone.
We are getting the dates really fast of the event.
We can, or as, as Commissioner Davis, we can already start with a promotion of Browards first and kinda put the, the seal, um, and, and put your names and then a, a photo. Well, I'll, I'll get with Commissioner Davis and I'll get with Mary Lou, but, um, this, this, this is, they're, they're depending on us and this is, um, you know, we've, we've all been to this event. I think it's a worthy, um, investment.
June 17th.
Great, I won't even be here.
May 2nd.
No, my vote is no. I'm just joking, yes.
Ad deadline is May 26th, so we wanna get on that and it has the specs and everything.
Okay, move on.
So it sounds like we have consensus?
Yes, we can move on, Mayor.
I won't be able to attend if that affects, you know, 5,000 or 3,500, but, uh, I'm sure we could fill a table, so that's okay. All right, perfect. So, uh, I have consensus on this with Commissioner Davis. All right, passes. Uh, $5,000 to the Broward League of Cities for a table. Premium sponsorship. It's okay. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm done. Uh, let's move on to appointments. So, uh, we have our charter review board. Commissioner James, have you made your appointment? You, you have to.
I can't talk, I'm turning off.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Yes, I did a lot of searching, but I did find a resident that, um, was excited to serve on multiple boards. I did ask her, she's in the audience. Her name is Kamula Wright. Well, she can serve on all the boards. I, I mean, if that's what you wanna serve on, I mean, if she's saying yes.
Oh, she's your appointment on charter review. Perfect. Perfect. All right.
Yes.
Because she's my appointment on the housing authority.
Oh, see?
Yeah, so I was like, what are you doing?
She's the same resident that did the home, um, the first time homeowners thing in, uh, CW Thomas Park a few weeks, a few months ago.
All right. Congratulations, Mrs. Wright. All right, uh, for our two at-large appointments, I would like to, uh, call them now. I have two suggestions. Okay, I have Bob Lozano, who is my alternate, so I'm gonna move from an alternate to an actual at-large member approved by us. And then I have, uh, Morris Stowers. He's on the, uh, planning and zoning board as well. And, uh, he's lived in Dania for over 20 years. He's very involved. Um, you know, uh, we really have to get this board together so they can have a meeting and, uh, this would finalize it. And look, commi- Vice Mayor Llewellyn has an alternate as well.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Charlotte Slabota, alternate. Do we still need one additional alternate if we have it?
No, I think that's it. All right. Commissioner James needs alternate?
I just meant that you gave up the.
Oh, yeah, you need an additional alternate.
Yeah, we need one alternate because that's the, uh, you're moving Bob Lozano to at-large.
Yeah, he's at large.
So then that opened up the alternate because he was the alternate originally, right?
Okay.
So then.
Yes, uh, no, let me find my thing. I have, I have a notebook.
But we still need, we need one more. We just need one more alternate if we can.
Okay, let me see, I can pick one. You know what? I have my two regular ones. I moved. All right, from, uh, from my alternate, I, I'll, I'll point, uh, Gunner Maglioka.
Can I have, I mean, if you.
It, it, how is it stated?
They're all at large. They're all at large. They're all at large. So in other words, um. Your alternate was at large.
My alternate.
If, if everybody doesn't agree or we.
So do I need another alternate or, you know, Commissioner James, uh, we could?
Well, let's start with this. Do you, everybody agree with the three so far, which is Bob Lozano, Morris, Stow- Stower and Charlotte Slabota?
And Charlotte Slabota, yeah.
Is everybody okay with it? We have consensus on the three?
Yeah, the one alternate, Charlotte Slabota, and then Bob Lozano, Morris, Stowers are two commissions at large. So we need one, uh, alternate and, yeah, Commissioner James, go ahead. Let me see, one sec. Go ahead.
Thank you, Gloria Black.
Gloria Black, perfect.
Is everybody okay with that?
Everybody's okay with Gloria Black as an alternate? Okay.
So we have our board. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. I'm happy we accomplished that. And now, uh, for my appointment on the Dania Beach Housing Authority, uh, our most popular end of the meeting person, Mrs. Kamula Wright, thank you for staying for the whole entire meeting. Uh, really appreciate it. You know, now you see how it works. I'm sure the charter review, review board won't be as long, but it's very important and, and thank you for stepping up and thank you for stepping up for the housing authority as well.
Mayor, if I may, just, can I ask that, your appointments, if you can just send me the contact information so we can reach out to them ASAP?
Yes.
And get this going?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now for our administrative reports, we will start with the city manager.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, um, city team and the residents that are here and the ones that are watching at home. Before I get to my report and, and I'll be as brief as possible, um, as, as Captain Mark stated earlier today, um, there were some comments that were made. And, um, and I, I take offense because if, if, if I don't take offense, that means I don't, I don't care and my team doesn't care. And, and while we're imperfect, because none of us are perfect, I, I know the level of integrity and work ethic that my team has, that my colleague Eve Bootses has. And I just wanted to put that on the record in regards to some of the statements that, that were made. And, um, I know our, our, our code team, working under the leadership of, of Candido and, and Eleanor and, and Corinne, um, they do a tremendous job, as does BSO, whenever we get calls and we always have to prioritize. Um, so I just wanted to put that on the record. I can't tell you enough in regards to the challenges that, that we face. But like you all said, all these challenges make us ready and, 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 you know, it's not even hurricane season and we dealt with something very, very unprecedented. Um, there wasn't a phone call that wasn't returned. There wasn't an email that wasn't returned. Even it was 10 o'clock at night and Candido and I hadn't even showered and we were all full of mosquito bite, as was, you know, Darren and, and Fernando and, and Dencer and Eric and all the team. We made our residents first and we will continue to always put our residents first. Um, including all the emails that you all sent us, call this person, reach out to this person. We were knocking on people's doors. And the good thing is, all the residents that, that weren't here tonight, but that reached out to us and that were very, very satisfied. Um, so I just wanted to put that on the record. Um, and we had to split the team. So not only were we dealing with the challenges of the streets and the flooding, we were dealing with the challenges here in our house, at City Hall, at Frost Park, at PJ Millie, at IT Parker, at Public Services. Um, this, this is the, the remediation report. This report is just the city facilities. I, I wanna thank Linda Gonzalez and our entire team from Public Services and also the small team that we have that works in facility maintenance. Because we moved immediately with remediation, because we know how quickly mold forms. We saw that in, in the West Wing. So, um, we, we have upped, um, our investment in, in our insurance and our coverages, um, in the past couple of years. Um, so out of pocket, we paid 12,000, you know, $12,500. But, um, the total remediation cost just for city facilities is 135,000 plus a, another $350,000 to repair the work that, um, and the damage that occurred um, because of the, of, of the storm. I, I, I can't thank enough, um, and, and I remember, Commissioner James, when, when you interviewed me for this position, you talked about all the contacts that I had in Miami-Dade County. Um, and, and it was very important for you that I, that I developed those relationships and those contacts here in Broward County. And, and those contacts came through, um, from, from FWC in, in the state and Rodney Barretto, who's the director of FWC, to Alina Hurdak, the city manager for the city of Miami Beach, um, Monica Sepero, our county administrator that was on vacation and she was texting me, she was out of the country. Um, Representative Hillary Cassell calling us, um, Congresswoman Wasserman Schultz, um, our, our, our county commissioner being for, um, Senator Jason Pizzo. It was an outpour of people calling us, of us calling them, knocking on every door to ensure that our residents would have as much help as possible. So it was, um, despite the challenges that, that we faced, we continue to see what this team is, is made of. Um, BSO and the entire, um, Dania Beach team, and I just wanted to thank them. Um, an important document that, that I have just given you, um, just to remind you so you can also remind our residents, uh, because we had a really good meeting today with our, with our CFO and our deputy CFO, um, and our entire city team and the monies that, that have been committed um, for these great, great projects. And this also includes an additional $3.2 million for water and sewer and, and stormwater in addition to what we're asking for from the feds, in addition to what, uh, we're, we're asking in, in the state budget. And we won't leave any stone unturned. And we won't leave any stone unturned in, in, in regards to, um, designing and constructing all these projects, eh, city, citywide. Um, and, and some of it is going to come from the monies that we've been able to find, budgetary, uh, uh, appropriations. And, and also, we're gonna need the help of, of our community as well, as we will, as we have discussed. And we look forward to coming back in June with a map of all the projected, um, eh, projects citywide so you, so you and our residents can get more of, of a visual. But we're tapping into every source in regards to, um, storm, storm drainage. And this concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Our city attorney Bootses?
I think you've had enough reports tonight. Good night.
Thank you very much. Short and sweet. City clerk, reminders?
Yes, so upcoming meetings, you have May ninth, uh, which we actually just changed. So, it's going to be postponed to the twenty-third, um, to go along with our May twenty-third regular city commission meeting. So, the CRA will be no longer on May ninth, but on the twenty-third at five thirty and then on May ninth as well.
I believe it's at six, isn't it?
Well, it depends on the length of the agenda. So, that's not determined yet. I don't wanna. The CRA, meeting to the twenty-third. And it might be at six. We'll keep you posted depending on the agenda size. And then May ninth, uh, at seven PM for a regular commission meeting and that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, everybody, thank you for coming out. Everybody get home safe and keep it classy. Meeting adjourned.
Keep it classy. I like that.
Was that on the fly or was that?
It was on the fly.
I like that.